Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, March 17th, 2014 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. This time I'll call the meeting to order. At 6:00 PM we had a work session with the Moyoc Small Area Plan as provided by staff. At this time for invocation and pledge of allegiance, I'd like to call on Reverend Ricky Bishop. There, I was sweating it. And please, please stand and then he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I like making you sweat. Good evening ladies. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this chance to assemble as a people of a community for the good of a community. Reminded by the Prophet Daniels, we read his letters that you had a little contest with Nebuchadnezzar, the Emperor of the entire Babylonian empire, to let him know though he was Emperor, you were God and the Most High reigns over all. We acknowledge that and recognize that tonight. And we thank you for the privilege of being stewards of what you have given us. And so we pray we may seek you for wisdom, follow you in obedience, and that you, the Most High, may get maximum glory, just as Nebuchadnezzar came to proclaim. We proclaim that tonight in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bishop. This time we're going to need approval of the agenda. I would like to ask that item nine in the consent agenda be continued to the next Commissioner's meeting. Do you have a motion? A second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. We have public comment, then we have a public hearing tonight. And Mr. McCree will be manning the clock for three minutes per speaker. First one is Ms. Mary Etheridge. And I ask everyone to please give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. Shawboro is a small farming community with two churches, one community building, a post office, and two houses listed on the National Registry of Historical Homes. On December the 5th, 2011, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Idlet, Mr. Petrie, and Ms. Gilbert approved a junkyard to be located on 1.1 acres in the Shawboro neighborhood within 600 feet of my home where I have lived since 1976. At that meeting, not, no one was concerned over a junkyard's lot size or asked for a study to be done concerning lot sizes of junkyards. At that meeting, no one was concerned over a junkyard being in harmony with the surrounding areas or asked for a study of compatibility of junkyards with the homes in the area. At that meeting, not one of them was concerned over increased traffic in Shawboro or asked for a study or to be done on traffic coming in and out of a junkyard in the county. At that meeting, not one of them cared that a local real estate agent from Currituck County testified that that would, putting a junkyard in Shawboro would decrease the value of the property in that community. At that meeting, they all heard every entity in the county telling them it was not a good idea to put a junkyard in Shawboro. But at that December the 5th, 2011 meeting, the very first time the junkyard was discussed at a Commissioner's meeting. Now folks, I'm talking about a junkyard and not a development. They passed it with flying colors. These four Commissioners did not listen to their professional staff and they did not care that the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources said it was a horrible idea to put a junkyard so close to historical homes. And they certainly didn't ask or even care to have a study to be seen if a junkyard would be good in my neighborhood. After two and a half years, I still can't understand why it was done or why my family has been treated so differently. But maybe now, since they are so into studies, we can request a study and find out why. Yes, the only reason I continue to speak is to hopefully prevent this from happening to other citizens of Currituck County because fighting your own government is not cheap and no one should be forced to do it. And since it's St. Patrick's Day, I'll leave you with a little St. Patrick's Day saying. If God sends you down a stony path, may he give you strong shoes. And as you can see, I've got all my hiking boots. Thank you.
Ms. Etheridge, while you're here, could you give us updates on the upcoming elections and early voting?
Not at this time. I will ask at the beginning.
Would like for, for the general population, not for me. Okay, I'll put that down as a no. Next, we have Mr. Will Craddock. Thank you.
Board members, good evening. My name's Will Craddock. I live at 182 Bromley Road, Nice Island, North Carolina. And I'm here to talk about that there are currently 14 combination classes, excuse me, 14 combination elementary classes in Currituck County Schools countywide. And I'm here to tell that it could be remedied with the cost of $400,000 and that's 1% of the current school board's operating budget, meaning that every grade would have one teacher instead of multiple grades being taught by one teacher at the elementary level. Coupled with the fact that homework in this county is zero part, is considered zero of your final grade. Okay, so meaning we have middle school, high school students that if they do their homework, it's okay. If they don't do it, it's okay. It's optional. That policy's been in effect for a year and a half. Okay, so these, as a result of these, our entire school system is compromised. Okay? I like to think that we're trying to educate, not just reduce the rigor of the curriculum. So according to the GOP platform, as I understand it, under the Articles of Education, we're supposed to be educating to the child's God-given potential. We're not doing that in this case. You are the elected leaders and you're the stewards of our money. And I would strongly suggest and urge, I would urge you to lead on this issue. Okay? I wouldn't suggest that you, you know, tell me, hey, go to the school board or it's a school board issue. This is a countywide issue. This is every citizen's problem, grandparent, parent, neighbor, every child that enters that school system, this is what they can expect. This is no longer the Currituck County School System of four years ago or two years ago. It's vastly changing right before our very eyes with little or no notice, quite honestly. So I would ask you as the elected leaders, as the stewards of our money, that I would urge you to explore the option of providing this $400,000 and remedy this situation. Remedy these eight missing teachers, possibly out of the $10 million surplus of funds that I read about recently in the paper. Okay? Until such time as the school board and their administrators can be held accountable. Okay? Till they can, till they can be held accountable and the budget can have some real, real allotments, reallocations of the monies of the $39 million dollars already dealing with. We all know our local economy is driven by tourism. Imagine if we had a first-class, first-rate education system. That would attract more full-time residents. It would attract more business.
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
May I conclude? Please finish your statement.
Yes, sir, thank you. It would attract more, more businesses and more employees. Thus, thus, it would create a much more diverse and stronger economy for Currituck County. So those are my thoughts. I really appreciate it if you would lead on this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Craddock?
Yes, sir.
To your second point, and the reason I, I know this is because I got a son that's a senior at Currituck County High School.
Yes, sir.
I believe they've just recently changed the policy relative to grading of homework. I think it is now graded. I could be wrong, but I remember talking with my son about it, so I think.
Okay, yes, sir. And, and, and it has had its first reading to have a change, which by the way, that has been the policy for the past year and a half. Okay? So that is the policy today. And until it's read again and approved, it will be, then it will be up to the teachers. They may elect to give homework, they may elect not to. The word "may" leaves a lot of, you know, open to interpretation. So they're talking about leaving it, the change that they're adopting possibly at the next meeting because it's still, what I just told you, that is, that is the current grading policy. What they're proposing to do is, they're proposing to possibly let the teachers decide if they want to give homework for grade and then, then if they do, it can't exceed more than 10% of their final grade. But, but nonetheless, currently right now today and for the past year and a half, homework is optional. Homework is zero part of your final grade. So I'm saying, hey, we got more combination classes than we had four years ago, right now. And we have homework as not part of the grade. So we keep chipping away at it, chipping away at it. What are we doing? Are we racing to the bottom or we going to race to the top?
Mr. Craddock?
Thank you.
Mr. McCree, could you, per the general statutes, state what authority we have over school policies?
Well, your, your, I guess jurisdiction over school systems and the operation of the school board is financial. I mean, you, you provide a portion of the funds for the school system to operate, but that pretty much ends your ability to have any control with regard to the school system and in particular their operation and policies.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if I'm, if I would, could I follow up?
We're, we're done. We're not the school boards. You need to go to the school board.
Yes, sir.
To address these issues. We do not do any policies with the school system.
Yes, sir.
They have to be addressed with the school board.
Yes, sir.
I have children in the school system as well.
Yes, sir.
And, and.
Does any of this bother you as a parent?
It doesn't bother me. I have four kids in the school system. My sister's taught 20 some years. It offends me that you're knocking down the Currituck County School Systems. I mean, you've talked, I like you, you're a nice guy and I understand your concerns, but it offends me. 21 years, my sister's taught in this school and she makes less, we've already discussed that last time, and it offends me. She teaches a combination class. It works. She's got a teaching degree. She went to East Carolina University. She, you know.
Are you familiar with Common Core?
I'm familiar with a lot of stuff.
Were you familiar, were you familiar that homework counts 0% of their final grade? Were you familiar with that? Just be honest.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're happy about that?
Gentlemen.
Okay, yes, sir.
We have a good school system here, bottom line.
Gentlemen, we don't.
Talking about having a better one. I'm talking about it's been eroding over the past four years.
Craddock, please.
Yes, sir.
We do, we do not set the policies of the school system.
Yes, sir.
We have zero authority. You need to take those issues to the school board.
I have been, I have been and I intend on keep doing so. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add a little additional piece of clarity. Even if this body so choose to appropriate $400,000, as Mr. Craddock had suggested, you have no, no, no authority to dictate to the Board of Education of how that will be spent. So even if you wanted or you thought he had an excellent idea and you added $400,000 to budget, the Board of Education would be free to take that $400,000 and do whatever they please with it as long as it went towards instructional programming in the school system. So as a board, you cannot dictate even financially how and where they appropriate their funds.
Thank you. That's all I had. Sign up for public comment. Is there anyone else? Hearing none, I'll close the public comments. We'll go to our next item, is a presentation by the YMCA. I believe we have Dean Maddox who will, and of course, Mr. George.
Thank you.
Who, last time he was here, I think we had a swimming pool presentation. I don't know if we got one tonight.
I had nothing to do with that, sir.
But please, please introduce yourselves for the audience and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Mr. Manager, my name's Billy George. I'm the President and CEO of the YMCA Southampton Roads and have with me Dean Maddox, who's our local community center executive, who is charged with the operations for our Currituck YMCA Family Center as well as our Elizabeth City and Albemarle branch. Want to make a quick numerical presentation tonight and show you a couple, a couple of videos to tie, bring the Y to you. I'm proud to say that the investment you made three years ago, the Currituck Family YMCA is doing very, very, very well. Still maintaining over 1,400 household units, roughly 4,000 members, which is exceptional. 40% of our membership comes on some form of scholarship. It's roughly $30,000 a month. $350,000 a year is going in reduced fees to families in need. But the most impressive number for me last year is 110,000 visits to the family center. That's important. But what I want to talk tonight and show you a little bit about is being more impactful. And the first video we want to show you is a road recovery video about one of your members, a stroke victim. And the second is about heroes that make the Y work. So with your indulgence versus listening to me, we're going to put on a, put on a show for you tonight. So Ben, I think, has got the control, so please enjoy.
I will be the last person who will think that I'm going to have a stroke. Somehow my symptoms are not typical of those who suffer the stroke. So when the symptoms actually starts appearing, I was already at the emergency room. The biggest challenge I faced since the stroke was the fact that, that I'm no longer the same person like I was prior to the stroke. It emotionally affected my children. It emotionally affected my good friends and that was harder than anything else. One day I just got my head straight and I said, they discharged me from rehab, but I got to do something else. I cannot just sit at home and do nothing. I am very close to my goal of walking. I have been taking the steps and everything and I think what it did for me is just improving my balance. As a result of the balance, I'm gaining back my confidence in walking again.
I'm Lisa Little. I'm the fitness coordinator for the Currituck Family YMCA. Back in January, a friend of Carlotta's invited her to join my class, which is the active older adult chair exercise classes. She comes every Monday, Wednesday, Friday and joins in with the rest of the crew and just has a great time. And just last week, she walked up the steps on her own without a wheelchair to greet me to attend class, which was a wonderful experience to feel, you know, for her. And now she's attending Zubagul, which is one of her favorite classes.
What I find at the Y is the fact that we have instructors that guide us and help us. You can tell they're just not doing it because it's a job. They love their job. And even the ladies at the front, I cannot say enough. I cannot say enough. Visit the Y, find out for yourself. Sometimes we spend more money on things that are not even significant to our lives, you know, and we do that. And what's stopping people sometimes is the money. I said, think about where we really spend our money. And I think the Y is money well spent for individuals or for families. They have a variety of activities, not just for the children and the teenagers and the adults, but they have a lot of this for the active seniors like myself. I didn't know that when I joined the Y, really, you know. I only found out when I came to this.
They wake up in the morning and get ready for work, just like everyone else. They eat breakfast, pack lunches, sit in traffic and deal with stress, just like everyone else. Last year, a special group of people made a difference in the lives of others in our They came in early and stayed late. They worked nights, weekends, and even on their days off. They were there for each other every single day in ways both large and small. For them, the Y isn't just a job or a hobby. It's a mission to keep children safe and young people active. To bring families closer and communities together. To turn strangers into friends and friends into a community. Through fitness classes, organizing book clubs, or just by making the coffee. Every single day, the YMCA, together where there are community volunteers, are hard at work to make scenes like these possible. Tonight, we celebrate you. You made a real difference in the lives of real people this year. We didn't do it for the recognition or even the thanks. But in his eyes, in her mind, and in our hearts, you're a hero. It's the heroes among us that keep the Y strong.
Thank you. You know, for us, it's, it's just, it's harder to find sometimes, but I hope by showing the videos tonight, you see how we work very hard strengthening the foundations of every community that we serve and that includes our Currituck Family YMCA. I'd like Dean to just bring a quick update on some local things and we'll be happy to address any questions.
Some of the heroes for us have been the community partners that we've worked with from Cameron Lowe at Cooperative Extension or Sandy Kinsel at Currituck County Schools, Jason Weeks with Parks and Rec and Stacy with the Senior Center. Just phenomenal people that on a range of, range of issues were pulling together to serve the county. And I think that's one of the things that really just inspires me about Currituck County. We're so willing to pull together to serve the community. So I just want to report back to you that your community partners are making a difference not only inside the YMCA walls, but outside as well, so.
Dean, I have one, one point that I want you to just kind of elaborate on. The We Build program and like Carlotta addressed in her video about the scholarships. A lot of people don't understand that there are some programs out there, so I know I'm putting you on the spot, but this is something that we've worked with on the We Build program. And I think that the community deserves to know a little more about that, if, if you would.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Marion. You know, every year we raise money for, not for the facility or salaries or anything like that, but the people just like Carlotta who can't afford the YMCA. And the money that we raised through the We Will People program, annual giving, 100% of that goes towards those scholarships. So it's the community giving back to the community, not giving to the Y. And the need here is so great, as it is in every community, but we want to make sure that, that we don't turn away anyone because of financial need. And we work extremely hard to make sure that 100% of people who want to be there can be there.
Is there one else?
I'd just like to say, thank you all for what you do. I mean, to me, I've been here since the Y began. It's a huge success, I believe, and really commend you for a job well done.
Thanks. It's a pleasure to serve. It's a great community.
We've got great staff and great people and hear a lot of compliments from people about the Y. I have a lot of people say it's kind of like a high school reunion when they go out there because they see people they haven't seen in 20 years or 10 years. And, and it's kind of brings both ends of the community together in one location to get to know each other. And it's been a big success from that standpoint as well. And, and we thank you and you're a great partner. And how much is the operational expense to Currituck County every year?
Zero.
Ah, that's right.
We, we change it. We do so much more.
No, 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 no. Well, we want you to do more, but with less.
Mr. Chairman, that's a very good point. I mean, it's for what we're getting, for what it costs us is a wonderful investment.
Sure is. And we thank you and we appreciate you driving all the way down.
My pleasure.
And you coming all the way over.
It's a pleasure.
And when we do anything, just let the manager know.
Will do.
Dean, I want to thank you especially for your leadership and, and leading your staff because they do a remarkable job and, you know, I've seen it firsthand. So my hats off to you doing a fantastic job in, in the leadership role that you serve.
Thanks. It's a great team. It's a great team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is public hearing in action on PB 1312 Moyoc Commons Request for a Conditional Resigning of 27.66 acres from agriculture to CDSFM, Conditional District, Single Family Mainland, Tax Map 15, Parcel 79 Moyoc Township. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a zoning amendment to the Currituck County zoning map. It is a conditional zoning district, which means is a reminder that the applicant's able to propose conditions as part of the application. It also requires a conceptual development plan that is binding on the property. So I'll show you that plan here in a few minutes, but just wanted everybody to understand this is a conditional zoning. You can see the subject property on the aerial photograph on your screen. It is a 27 acre tract of land directly behind or west of, kind of southwest of the Foodline Shopping Center, the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center. And of course, it is east of the Quell Run subdivision. Zoning pattern, you can see this, this tract and the other two nearby tracts are remained zoned agricultural, but to the, to the north, you see there is single family mainland zoning that exists up, up near Pudding Ridge Road. And to the, to the west, you have the general business zoning of the commercial shopping center. So this does abut those two zoning districts. Land use plan, which is an important policy fact for this, this particular tract and much of the reason why staff's recommendation is the way it is. The land use plan designates this area as full service. And what that means is that it is designator for higher intensity development. That could be residential densities, that could just be non-residential commercial investment. In this particular case, it is in the Moyoc sub-area, which the policy emphasis for the Moyoc area is on properly managing increased levels of urban growth. And it also alludes to that in areas where central sewer is proposed or existing, additional services are available and the character of the area supports it. Higher density ranging from three to four units per acre could be considered. I'll note that this request proposes a gross density of two dwelling units per acre. And of course, this is the conceptual development plan and I'll leave that on the screen as I talk through some of the rest of the items that relate to this case. I talk through some of the rest of the items that relate to this case. Again, it is zone agricultural. This development is proposing to connect to county water and the county sewer systems. Proposed streets in the development will be constructed to NC DOT standards, which we require for all our subdivisions. Stub streets are opposed to adjacent vacant lands. In this case, the primary access is coming through the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center on the road that goes from 168 back to this property. Flood zones are X and shaded X. There are minimal, less than one acre of wetlands on the site that will be, are proposed to be filled with Army Corps of Engineer permits. This is a conditional zoning, so what that means is, number one, is this conceptual development plan that's on the screen and is also located in your agenda packets. That is a plan that accompanies a zoning district, so it is binding on the property. To amend this plan, you would have to go back before this board of commissioners to do so. The applicant also proposed six zoning conditions to accompany this. I'm not going to read those verbatim, but I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. They proposed rear yard setbacks for all residential lots around the perimeter boundary. They have prohibited on-street parking. They have indicated that the location of streets, open space, and stormwater management facilities shall be as shown on this conceptual plan. The conditions also indicate the developer agrees that stormwater management shall be implemented, which it would have to be anyways. But they also, probably more importantly, agreed to do a preliminary drainage impact study to be provided to the county prior to submission of a preliminary subdivision plat. So if this zoning were approved, the next step would be to submit a preliminary plat. And this zoning condition basically says they've got to have a preliminary stormwater drainage plan and narrative completed before they submit that preliminary plat. Let me go over that. They've actually done the initial step in that, and I'll go over that in a second. Fifth condition is that all residential dwellings be constructed on crawl spaces or raised slabs. And the final condition, that the use of prefabricated structures and trailers as dwellings shall be strictly prohibited. Again, those are six zoning conditions that were offered by the applicant. Moving on, they had a community meeting for this project in February 22nd, 2013. It's been some time ago, but that is the first step in the process. I'll say that when this initially came forward or was applied for, it was applied for as a planned development. And as the board knows, the planned development is probably a little more intense. Zoning district allows for a little bit higher densities, mixes of housing types. They have subsequently changed this request from a planned development to a conditional district, single-family mainland. And real quickly, differences are, the previous request that was submitted was for a total of 83 units. This request is for 55, so it's basically a change of three units per acre to two. The previous request had single-family detached and single-family attached, had some town homes and things that were included in it. This request is only single-family detached dwellings. And the previous request was provide a 30.9% open space. This request provides 40.4% open space. So there's an increase in open space required with the zoning district they chose. As I mentioned earlier, they have performed the preliminary drainage impact study and narrative. That information is in plan format in your agenda packets. And essentially, what the narrative and study indicate is that the proposed development can meet the Unified Development Ordinance's stormwater management standards. The study and narrative also specify off-site improvements with the stated goal of improving drainage in the community. It's really hard to see on the screen, but in your packet, you can see that some of the off-site improvements include some cleaning of ditches, and then some upsizing, replacement of culverts on Pudding Ridge Road. And then last thing I'll say is that this is a preliminary drainage plan, and the county engineer and soil and water technician have looked at this. If this rezoning is approved, the county will need to see a final drainage plan that would then need to be approved by the technical review committee. And once that's done, it would then come before you if they submitted for a preliminary plat. So that kind of leads me to the conclusion of my presentation, and the technical review committee has reviewed this request, and it does appear to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan and the purposes of the Unified Development Ordinance. As such, the TRC does recommend approval of this rezoning request. As part of that recommendation for approval, the technical review committee is suggesting four additional zoning conditions be added. Now, for the board or for staff to add zoning conditions, it must be agreed to by the applicant, so they would have to agree to these conditions. One is that while the rear yard setbacks are shown on this plan, in no instance shall setbacks be less than is otherwise allowed by the UDO. Number two, that prior to land disturbing activities in the development, the property owner shall conduct a tree inventory as required by the UDO. And what that does is it takes large trees, which we call heritage trees, and forces the developer to maintain those, to preserve those. If they remove those, they have to replace, have to plant and replace those trees that are removed, so that would maybe help create some buffer if some trees are removed. Third condition from staff is that an effort be made, if this is approved, to have a sidewalk connection between the lots and the commercial shopping center. Probably makes sense that folks that will live here could actually walk safely to the shopping center. And last condition, that the property be developed in accordance with the conceptual development plan dated December 26, 2013, which you see on your screen. That also includes as well the preliminary drainage plan and narrative. The planning board heard this request previously, and they did recommend approval. Their approval was based on the conditions that the TRC recommendations be followed and that a stormwater management study be provided by the developer. And that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions for Mr. Woody.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, you said it's going to be a combination of crawl space and raised slab?
Yeah, the condition stated that it could be either or. It says, "All residential dwellings shall be constructed either with crawl spaces or on raised slabs." And the raised slabs would have a finished floor at least 16 inches above the outside ground grade.
Question two, when you do a stormwater study, and I drove around up there today, got some concerns, how far out does that study take into effect the whole Moyoc area, or is it just in that isolated area?
The UDO would only require that the subject parcel provide the stormwater analysis. In this case, I know they did calculations to determine downstream flows, kind of like a downstream analysis, but I'd have to let the engineer answer that directly as to how far they did go.
I know my concern is, and I think the concern for a lot of people here, is it may not impact Moyoc Commons, but what is the effect of the surrounding area?
It's a good question, and again, I'll have to defer to their engineer for that. I know that the county requires that at a minimum, they do a stormwater analysis of their subject property.
Well, my concern is, it's a complete maze of ditches and canals going north, south, east, you know, east-west. And the impact out on 168 is in the surrounding area, once you get a block or two away, that's a concern of mine. The other thing is about the trees. This pond right here, I think, based on what I saw today, is that's all trees there now, right?
It is. And they'll have to do a tree inventory, any trees that are heritage trees, if they reboot, if they would be removed, if there's a pond there.
But they're going to have to remove those trees to put the pond there.
Then they'll have to replace anyone that would qualify as a heritage tree. They'll have to do replanting. So that could be significant, depending on the size of the trees.
There's some big trees in there. Thank you.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, our current stormwater policy, correct me if I'm wrong, does it require that there's no more runoff post-development than there is pre-development?
At a minimum, in this case, it would actually probably require that the post-development runoff is less than the pre-development runoff, because you have open field on part of this property.
All right. Go back to Commissioner Griggs's question, how far out runoff? Where is the line drawn of determining how much runoff you have?
Their responsibility is managing the runoff that is generated from their property, from 27.55 acres.
Okay, but my question is, with Commissioner Griggs, how far out? I'll go back to my question, how far off, how far out is this runoff measured? Is this runoff measured at 168, the impact there?
I'd have to let their engineer answer that. I mean, the only thing I can say with certainty is that they have to manage any runoff created from their development off of this property. So whatever comes off this property today can't be exceeded once it's built. And as a matter of fact, it would probably be, probably be less than what it is today.
So you're saying that the impact would be less on 168?
I can't say that. I mean, again, I would have to defer to an engineer to make that assumption.
Thank you.
I guess I'm going to go back, if I could, for clarification for my question. I'm not an engineer, but if our stormwater plan requires that there's no more post-runoff than there is pre-development runoff, then what would, there wouldn't be any impact? I mean, unless I'm looking at this wrong, would there, I don't see how it could be.
There shouldn't be, no. Now, I will say, I want to say one thing. Our stormwater plan requires design up to, make sure I say this right, 24-hour, 10-year storm event, which is about a little over a six-inch rain. So it does, at some point, you have to say, there's just so much rain that everything's going to start holding water. That's the design criteria for the stormwater management plan. And yes, to answer your question, is it should be less runoff than exists now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So in essence, where you have stormwater flooding today, you can probably expect to have it post-development, but no more, no greater?
In essence, but again, I would feel more comfortable if an engineer answered that question from a technical standpoint.
I'm just trying to clarify what we're talking about, is all.
Mr. Woody, what will be the impact to the wastewater system in Moyoc with the addition of this number of homes on it?
My understanding is there is capacity available to serve this development. Now, I can't tell you, the manager may know, I don't have the specific numbers of what that leaves in terms of remaining capacity.
I mean, it's been spoken to here over the last couple of months. I just want to know, I mean, before we go ahead and say yes to this, that there would be capacity for the sewage system?
There is available capacity.
And how does that, in fact, the economic development, where we were going only to kind of refine this and require that the sewage system be used for economic development only?
Well, the existing plant was developed with the ability to be expanded from the current capacity of 100,000 to about 600,000 gallons. We're going through the environmental approval process now to allow us to do those expansions so that when it is necessary to expand that plant, we'll be in a position to acquire permits to do that. So we have significant expansion capabilities of that system.
Thank you.
Who pays for the expansion?
The folks that would connect to that system.
So nobody else would?
No, sir. It's a user-paid system, so the businesses that connect will pay through a combination of an impact fee and monthly user fees.
I got another question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, let me ask you a question. They're going to put in county water, county sewer. Is that right?
That's correct.
Where are those lines going to run? Right beside the shopping center or where?
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking is, will installing these utilities impact the existing canals and ditches as far as interfering or blocking or?
The utility lines are proposed along Moyoc Commons Drive through the right-of-way.
By the Burger King?
Yes.
So when they run, when they run the lines along the streets, are they going to affect any of the ditches that's going to be part of the stormwater plan?
No, the roadside swells that are along Moyoc Commons Drive, and if there were an effect on those, and I don't know if there would be, but if there are, they'd have to obviously regrade those back.
But you understand what I'm saying, is if you have a water line and a sewer line going down beside a ditch?
Yeah, I'm not sure that bringing the utility lines down Moyoc Commons Drive is going to impact.
No, I'm talking about when you run down the individual street in front of the house, is that going to affect the size or shape of the swale?
They would have to plan for that in their construction drawings. I mean, obviously, whenever they lay their utilities and plan, they're going to have to make sure that doesn't impact any drainage. All that would be part of the construction drawings, should this be approved, all that would be part of the construction drawing that would come forward for review, which is factored in stormwater management, utility line placement, driveway culverts, building elevation pad, all that gets worked through by the TRC.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Woody, I have a couple of questions regarding traffic. And the entrance, the main entrance for this development is through Moyoc Commons, on Moyoc Commons Drive, the same place that you were referring, that the utilities would run through. My greatest concern is the traffic, and with this being the main thoroughfare, that there's obvious three other stub outs, you know, to the adjoining properties. That the traffic coming through that shopping center in between the Burger King and the bank, granted, my concerns of once the traffic is on the highway, it's not a concern because there's a light there. But the point from where the development begins and to 168, that is a private road. And you've provided some documentation, and I've spoken to the county manager about that, but my biggest concerns are the safety of that, from 168 to where the development begins. You were adding, you know, approximately 100 vehicles per day, school buses, safety, emergency vehicles, and that development right there in, you know, if you're turning into the, where the Mexican restaurant is and that intersection right there, is there room for expansion? You know, it is a private road, and I've talked to the developers about this, and that is my greatest concern, is the safety inside of that shopping center prior to getting to 168. The traffic backs up already, so I know a traffic study is not going to provide any additional information saying that there isn't an issue, but my concern is the safety in that development itself.
I understand, and I think likely that a two-lane cross-section probably is adequate for the number of houses in the shopping center. I would say that if this is approved when the preliminary plat was submitted, as a part of that process, you know, obviously, the new roads will have to be built to DOT standards. I mean, certainly, I think you could, I believe through that process, we could have the existing Moyoc Commons Drive analyzed and assessed, and perhaps require any needed improvements to that that may be identified.
Which, Mr. Woody?
The responsibility of that would be on the owner of that private road, which is the Moyoc Crossing.
Or the responsibility of the developer to coordinate with the owner to do that. I mean, there are instances in our ordinance where we've made people do, the counties require off-site road improvements to ensure public safety. And that's just assuming that a public safety issue is identified as part of the preliminary plat process.
Okay. Maybe the engineer can elaborate on that for us.
Reference that, like you say, maybe a possible traffic study. I mean, that's a PVA, a Public Vehicle Access, so I don't know if that's something that DOT would even look at.
Well, it's on a private road, so I don't know that DOT would even...
Probably not, but DOT doesn't usually do traffic. I mean, most of the time, if you do a traffic study, the applicant's going to need to hire a professional engineer who would then do the study using, you know, standards that are in place. I mean, DOT has standards, but the private engineer would do that, and then they would seal that traffic study as either meeting warrants or needing improvements. The traffic studies are pretty standard stuff in a way.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Along with what Commissioner Gilbert was talking about, are there plans in the future for a Pudding Ridge Road, one or two exits? And that's one question. And the other part, Commissioner Griggs brought up something several months ago about when you do a traffic study or whatever, did we ever implement a plan where we picked the engineer and not the? You know what I'm referring to? Did we pick the engineer?
Obviously, but I'm not aware of...
In other words, we have an unbiased engineer rather than...
That conversation was relevant to mining operations, not traffic studies.
I know, but I'm just saying, it can be applied to a traffic engineer. There's a lot of different traffic engineers, and they work for...
Well, I think whether it's a county engineer or a private engineer, when they put their seal on it, they are putting their professional integrity on it. And I don't know if you want to get three different engineers bringing a plan forward, then what are you going to do, flip a coin to choose which one? Are you going to take the county's engineer's report? Are you going to take the developer engineer report? Are you going to take the third party?
We were talking about the county. We were talking about the county would pick the engineer. I'll let that go, but what are the plans for traffic on Putnam Ridge Road? Maybe not for now, but for later.
Well, now, there's not a, there's not a connection, a direct connection proposed of Putnam Ridge Road. Now, this project does provide stubs to the west, and should the other two parcels develop, the other two vacant parcels that remain, at some point, you could see this project have a connection to the Quail Run subdivision. If that connection ever did occur, then that would be another alternative way to get to Putnam Ridge Road. But I would think that the traffic flow, if the connection ever did occur long-term, I would think the traffic flow from Quail Ridge would actually use this to get out to the stoplight to the highway.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the roads, and I didn't know until this afternoon that the Moyac Commons stub was a private road. I just had assumed that that would be the public, well, it is the public means of ingress and egress, but I thought it was gonna be a state-maintained road. I'm not real comfortable with roads that are not state-maintained, simply because they get in disrepair. I understand there's agreement, but also, the roads within the subdivision, brings up a whole different point to me. The roads within the subdivision, I'm sure the homeowners in that subdivision, at some point in time, are gonna want the state to come in and maintain those roads. It'll be built to state standard, and they'll want the state to come in and maintain those roads. Well, now, we've got another dilemma, crossing over a private access to get into a subdivision of roads that are gonna be requested to be state-maintained. I don't know. I'm asking a question. What, is there conflicts there? Is that something that's normal, or I just see some issues there to me?
I don't believe NC DOT will maintain or accept a road into their system that's not connected to another road that's in their system.
There's the answer.
So as long as that, as long as that's the sole access, then these roads into the subdivision would not be accepted by NC DOT.
Would, I mean, they would qualify, though. I mean, reference to the, I mean, well, not that anybody in here is a NC DOT highway expert, but I mean, far as the size and so forth, I mean, Mr. Woody, that might be you. Would that be something that they would... They have to be built to DOT design and construction standards, yes. Which that might be an engineer question. Now, we would require that construction, design, and standard.
I understand. Is that something we normally allow, is to let private roads be built to state standard and then go away, and then five years from now, they get in disrepair, and nobody wants to fix them, and then they're standing up here and wanting to know why we're not fixing the roads? I mean, we go through that enough as it is. And I...
I think that's something that they'll have to address when, at some point, there's a lot of questions been raised concerning different issues. Anyone else? With that, I'd like to, Bob Parsons, call on Bob Parsons, your first, like, open the public hearing and call on Bob Parsons. And again, I would ask everyone to give your name and address for the record, and let's keep it moving along.
Okay. Bob Parsons, I live at 107 Kickapoo Trail in Edenton. I'm just in favor of this project. I'm a local realtor in Virginia and Carolina. And I have a lot of calls from folks looking for smaller lot sizes, being older folks are taking, and the baby boomers are retiring. They don't want large lots, per se, nowadays. Just looking for, a lot of folks I'm talking to in my business are also looking for some median-priced housing in Moyac. They like the idea of the Carolina life, and they like the idea of being close to Virginia, and closer to hospitals, and closer to shopping. I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bradford. I believe you're the engineer representing the project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jim Bradford, and my business address is 325 Volvo Parkway in Chesapeake, Virginia. The application I am presenting tonight, Moyac Commons, was continued at the August 19, 2013 hearing in order to allow time for further, to further respond to concerns from the community with regard to housing type, density, and drainage. With regard to housing type, the community had concern over a townhouse component, and for that reason, it has been eliminated, such that the current request is for single-family detached housing only. With regard to density, the community expressed in our meetings that they could not support anything in excess of two units per acre. The current application is a request for 55 single-family detached homes, which represents two units per acre on this property. Without a doubt, the areas of greatest concern to the community was stormwater management. And the continuance was to prepare a drainage study prior to moving forward with this body. The highlights of the drainage study are as follows. It is understood that the widening of Route 168 did not adequately address drainage on the west side of the road in this area. For that reason, drainage from this development is being promoted north to Shingle Landing Creek and away from Route 168. The lakes on the property have been sized such that the increase in depth of stormwater in the county's maintained ditches leading to Shingle Landing Creek will be on the order of one-eighth of an inch or less. With regard to ditch number five, which borders Quail Run, the 0.17 cubic feet per second increase toward that outfall is less than one-tenth of 1% of the 200 cubic feet per second already being contributed during a storm event. It is understood that Quail Run currently experiences significant flooding during storm events. Our study indicates a likely cause of this is an insufficient piping system beneath Putnam Ridge Road. An improvement to this piping system, which is offered by this development, would significantly reduce this existing problem and without increasing the volume of stormwater currently being conveyed downstream. The means by which all of the above has been achieved is by use of the conservation subdivision provisions of the current ordinance, which offer an opportunity to maximize density at two units per acre, yet require open space through the use of smaller lots. This open space allows for the preservation of farmland where desired, or alternatively, the provision for significant stormwater management and/or park areas where desired. I feel it's important to note that the value of a residential dwelling is heavily weighed in favor of the value of the improvement as opposed to the sheer size of the lot. For instance, within the nearby community of Quail Run, current assessments range from 198,000 to 250,000, with living areas ranging from 1,400 to 1,900 square feet. However, the lot values within Quail Run only differ $5,000 for those who own a half an acre more land than their neighbor with similar improvements in the same community. It is in recognition of the fact that smaller lots with similar living area in Moyac Commons, coupled with large community lakes and parkland with county sewer and water, will mark it for and be assessed equally or higher on a per-dwelling basis. I'd also like to point out that without the conservation subdivision approach, this community would not be economically viable, and the drainage improvements to benefit the, you know, communities downstream would not be, would not be possible. And having concluded my presentation, I, as well as Mr. Stuart Bonnell with our office who prepared the drainage study, will stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I had a question, reference what we had stated before, and I don't know if he would know that. Reference DOT taking those on. I know, as Mr. Woody said, as state roads, as far as do they take on state roads coming from a PVA, like in this situation? Do you know that?
Sir, I am not familiar enough with the Carolina DOT standards to state that equivocally. It's my understanding that the roads are designed to meet Carolina DOT standards, and that they actually endorsed the subdivision plat, saying that they were inspected during construction and constructed in accordance with those requirements. My estimation of that requirement is that it is with the understanding someday, they may be responsible, and they want, they want to be involved in the review and in the inspection process.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Sir, I got...
Don't leave yet.
Don't leave. That's all right. I'll go back to my original question about your stormwater study does not, now, I know what we're talking about post and pre, your stormwater study does not take into account the effect of 168. I know the post is supposed to be less, but there's no way of determining that.
The, at the meeting that we had here last August, there was a gentleman who, I listened intently to his presentation, and he lived adjacent to this property and has been there for some time. And he indicated that at the time that the 168 expansion occurred some time back, that he felt that his drainage was negatively impacted, and he was very concerned about any additional drainage being headed into what his outfall has historically been under that facility. And I believe also indicated that there, on the other side of 168, there is a drainage ditch running parallel with a railroad, which after a storm event used to be carrying significant amounts of water, which apparently, at this point, was not carrying anywhere near as much, meaning it was being held back by the improvement to that road in some fashion, whether that's a clogged culvert or insufficient piping, I'm not sure what the cause is. I don't know that he's, was thoroughly convinced that he knew why, he only knew the effect. So that when we began our drainage study after that meeting, what I did was look for an unrestricted outfall going under 168, which is the direction that all the drainage ultimately goes. And Shingle Landing Creek actually passes under 168 in an unconfined way. And so at that point, we used the equitable study, which was also brought up in that meeting back in August, the drainage study that was conducted for the county, and looked at the ultimate flows that were being anticipated for those ditches that we could reach, where the problems occurred, what conditions they were in, and then came up with a study, which we ultimately presented to the county engineer, and began to discern what his thoughts were and what he felt was a responsible approach on our part. After having determined that what we had done in this preliminary stage was reasonable and responsible, then we came back to y'all for consideration. Again, as stated by Mr. Woody, that is, that is only the chapter one of this preliminary drainage study that we would, in the event that the rezoning were upheld. Our next step would be to do an exhaustive topographical survey to underline in detail the further preliminary drainage study prior to subdivision approval, to prove out that the things that we said we would accomplish, that we will. And at that point only would we move forward to present the preliminary subdivision, only after that drainage study had been satisfied by staff. So we're not sending any water in the direction of 168. Virtually, everything is being directed towards Shingle Landing Creek, which is, I think, by far, the better outfall. And...
Is that the natural outfall?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I believe it is. And the engineer with our office, I'm a landscape architect by profession, the licensed engineer who prepared the study, Mr. Bonnell, Stuart Bonnell, with our office is here with me tonight to give you a much thorough analysis of what he looked at into the actual study, if you'd like to speak with him.
I'd like to ask him a question, 'cause I was at Tulsa Creek Road today at the traffic light, and one side of Tulsa Creek Road didn't have any water in the ditch, and the other side is flooded.
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to figure out the impact.
I have a, Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. I mean...
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. I'm Stuart Bonnell, represent Haslam folks, Chesapeake, Virginia. We're at 325 Volvo Parkway.
You can lift that up, so you don't have to bend over.
First rule was don't touch it, so, thank you.
You can pull it up.
Didn't want to touch it.
I had a question, reference that, you know, we, I'm looking at the pond size. If I'm not mistaken, last time, I believe the ponds were like two, same thing, two ponds, they were one-acre ponds, if I'm not mistaken. Now, they're, what, 4.4 acres? What's the, what was the depth of those ponds? I know they had said, somebody, I think Mr. Woody stated something about pond depth.
The pond depth is, you talking about the...
Well, I mean, what's the plant, no, no, what is the...
Above the groundwater table?
Yeah. I mean, what's the, I mean, when they're cut in, I mean, is it gonna be a six-foot pond, a four-foot, I mean, what's the proposed?
Yeah, the proposed depth of that pond would be roughly, say, four to six feet.
Okay.
And that would be above the groundwater table. Because the groundwater table, as you know, is very shallow right now. And those elevations of the site run between seven and eight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, you can proceed now. Do you have a question, Mr. Patrick?
I'm trying to figure out how you build a pond above the groundwater.
We're going, we're going, oh, we're going to be, we're going to be filling the site.
So if I've got groundwater 18 inches under the surface?
Yes, sir. That's approximately correct. Yeah, that's about in that range.
What you've got to do is you've got to build a pond, four to six feet above that 18 inches.
That's about right. We're looking, we're looking at a couple, maybe two, two and a half, three foot of fill in some places across the property, yes, sir.
Then you're gonna have to build like a berm around it to hold it?
No, sir, I don't, I don't see that. I see the site being lifted up, and as we're proposing, that all the site will be draining to the lake system. And then the water surface elevations in the pond would be managed, so that the goal would be not to do a bermed pond situation.
Can I ask one more question, please?
I'm sorry, I'm dumb. If you've got groundwater here and groundwater here, and you build this up, how do you, how do you move groundwater from here to here?
We're not talking about moving the groundwater, sir. What...
I know that, but what I'm saying is if you've got a ground, the water table is here.
Yes, sir.
And then the ditch is obviously gonna have some groundwater in them.
Yes, sir, I think, I think so.
Okay. And my question is, when you have rain that goes in on top of the groundwater, obviously, so you don't have flooding in the yards, you've got to move this water from these ditches to this pond.
Yes, sir.
Now...
We, yes, sir, we do, we do intend to provide some fill across the property to build these lots up. And the fill would be raised across the site.
But the, but the fill will not be in the, in the ditches?
Correct. The fill will not be in the ditches, that's correct. The fill would be in the, in the development area, on the lots, in the road area. We'd be raising the site up and draining the runoff to the proposed lakes. Did I answer your question?
Not really. I'm, you know, and I'm sorry I'm dragging this thing out.
Yes, sir.
I know that, but you still have groundwater in the ditches. Okay, so if I have groundwater in these ditches, and I'm building this up?
In the, in the existing ditches that are on the perimeter of the property?
Well, you're gonna put, I'm assuming you're gonna build swales, as they call them. I call them ditches. You're gonna...
Well, we'll have, we'll have roadside ditches in the, in the, in the, within the interior portion of the subdivision, and we'll have lot swales. The lots will be draining to the roadside ditches via the swales. And then the whole property will be draining to the lakes via the roadside ditches.
I know, but if I have groundwater here, and you build up the pond here above the groundwater, we've got to get water...
Okay, so what happens is...
Am I missing something?
What happens is you have, you have the, you set the pond outlet structure at the existing groundwater table, and you size that appropriately so that you can reduce the developed runoffs to pre-developed levels, and so that you can control the downstream water surface elevations. But you've, you've set that structure at the groundwater table so that we have positive conveyance out into the existing ditches. So what we intend on E Street is a pipe system from, from the pond to ditch four, just, just across the other side of Putnam Ridge Road. So that, on E Street, that would drain to ditch four via a pipe system. And then along the other ditch, ditch five, we would have a ditch across the property that's located to the southwest, out to ditch five. across the property that's located to the southwest out to ditch five.
So this blue line along here, this is the ditch that's going to go to ditch four that goes down parallel to E Street?
Say that one more time, sir.
There's a blue line that runs parallel to E Street?
Yes, sir.
That goes to ditch?
Yes, sir. That would be a pipe system.
So what you're going to do is you're going to get it into the pond, then you're going to move it from the pond down E Street to ditch four?
Yeah, we're basically going to pipe it past E Street into ditch four. Yes, sir. That's the current plan. And one thing that we intend to do there is currently E Street drains to ditch four, and there's an existing culvert there that crosses under Puddin Ridge Road. What we intend to do there is increase the efficiency of the drainage of that culvert by adding a new culvert there to help the efficiency of the drainage of E Street.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm old and slow.
Well, I'm, I don't have a lot of experience at this, so I'm trying to answer your question as thoroughly as I can.
Now, I have, now, E Street, when you're saying far as fixed, I mean, that's, E Street's not a state maintained road. If, I'm sure there's somebody in here, I didn't think it was, nor is D. Is that something that's going to, I mean, is that, you know, if it's not a state maintained road, can y'all, I mean, can you do improvements to that? I mean, does that have to be approved through, you know, whoever owns?
There is a recorded easement that is for the purpose of this property.
Okay.
That connects this property to the Puddin Ridge right away. And we were, we would provide this piping and the improvements within that easement. Yes, sir.
Is that going to affect flooding on E Street?
No, sir. E Street will not, not notice an increase in flooding at all. Our intent there is, like I said, to pipe past E Street and convey the pond discharge into ditch four. And the pipe would be extended to just past Puddin Ridge Road into ditch four. And that is an isolated conveyance system which will not impact E Street. It will not impact E Street negatively. And in fact, we're going to propose that culvert to cross Puddin Ridge Road to help E Street.
So you think the culvert you're proposing would actually help E Street? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. There's, there's two pipes that we propose from the pond to ditch four. One pipe is the pond discharge pipe, and that will extend in the easement across Puddin Ridge to ditch four. The second pipe is a culvert pipe that we would install under Puddin Ridge Road, and that would lay in beside the existing pipe that currently drains E Street. And that second pipe there would help E Street specifically. And I might say that, that as we extend this pipe from the pond to ditch four, we can install some, some inlets along that pipe and, and help out any, any areas that, that may be insufficiently draining now. We can install some inlets and, and further help that drainage on E Street.
So some of the property that's on the east that has some issues, you're saying that you could do some things to help that?
I think within reason, the developer would be on board with that. Yes, sir. There is some air, things that we can do, provide some inlets, provide some pipe stubs out to help better drain that area.
Okay.
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ride this thing.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question. When you put in a water line like this, I'm assuming there's a grade built in so the water will drain?
Yes, sir.
Because I talked to Mike Doxy today. He gave me a tour. So Mike, and I want to use your words. He said, the problem with Moyac is it's flat.
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't drain.
Yes, sir.
And that's the concerns I think people have got. So if you put this in, I'm assuming you've got to put a grade in.
For, for the purposes of this rezoning, we did, we completed topographic survey on ditch four, all the way down from Shingles Landing. We did not topo Shingles Landing, but basically we're just above where ditch four outlaw, outlets into Shingle Landing. We did that topographic survey all back to Puddin Ridge Road. So we know what that physical elevation is in the ditch at Puddin Ridge Road. We know what that is. And we know that we can extend that pipe from that point back to the pond and carry positive drainage so that it would do, have positive drainage from the pond to that point. And as you know, ditch four drains very well.
What, four and five both?
Excuse me?
Four and five both. I mean, five was running the ditch.
Five is huge. Five's a huge ditch. And that would, that would also drain very. We did not topographic survey five, but we did inspect it and evaluate it for the purposes of discussion.
But you're going to build a grade in to help it out?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In fact, what you'll see on the, on the next round of drainage study would be, like my colleague suggested, is that we're going to do extensive topographic survey down ditch five too, and, and up to the site so that we can completely satisfy Mr., well, Eric's concerns on, on all that drainage to, to Shingles Landings Creek.
Yes, sir.
I guess, Ben, this may be a question initially to you and then probably in tandem with you as well. I guess to get to the, a conclusatory portion of this, I guess my question would be, you had indicated that this is a preliminary plan, storm drainage plan.
That's correct.
And that if this is rezoned tonight, there will be a subsequent, more in-depth plan to address the drainage issues, which will have to meet our county's stormwater policy, which means no more post-development drainage than pre-development drainage. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And what I'd like to say also.
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
I mean, I'm just trying to get, because, because right now we're asking questions based on a preliminary study. That sounds like it was, it's in-depth, but there will be a much more in-depth study if I take.
Yes, sir.
What Mr. Woody has said, that will ultimately require and/or demand that there be no more.
Yes, sir.
Post-development. So that's something that subsequently will have to be approved by our county, by our county engineer and our staff. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
And we have met with the engineering staff.
Prior to submitting, prior to submitting for a preliminary plat, so, which is unusual. We usually don't have this type of analysis for rezoning, so that's unusual in and of itself. But, and they, they have met with the engineer probably three or four times at least, so.
Well, we've met physically here two times and we've, we've talked on the phone and we've passed emails back and forth. And that's, that was my point exactly. It's, it's kind of unprecedented that you do this kind of study for rezoning, but we do realize and developer realizes the importance of the drainage for the, for all the neighbors. And the word preliminary, yes, it's only preliminary because it's where we are in real time. But there has been a lot of work done on it. There, we have, we have looked at extensive calculations. We have looked at possible improvements. We have done topographic survey. So it's really a little more than preliminary, but we realize that in the sequence of events, it's preliminary because of what we got to go forward with. We understand that.
And, and just an observation, since I've been on the board, I know we've had other rezonings come in, and I know there's been other concerns about whether the soil would perk or whatever. And I was always, when I initially got on, I would ask, well, why don't we have these studies to let us know before we face the rezoning? And the answer I always got is that, well, they're expensive. And normally, the person would not go to that expense if there wasn't any possibility or if it was turned down. In this case, it sounds like there was significantly more, and as you indicated, significantly more pre-study work done than is usual. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to get to the bottom line, that if this were rezoned tonight, there would be a subsequent, more in-depth study that would have to pass county review.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time I'd like to ask Mr. Doxy and Mr. Weatherly to comment on the engineer study.
I'll entertain any questions you may have. If, if you want me to expound on the study and what, what our position is, I'll be glad to do that, too. The typically, like they said, when a rezoning comes forth, you know, a preliminary study is really, hadn't been required. But they have agreed at this point to do one, and they did a study. And after meeting with us, Eric and myself several times, three or four times, we're comfortable with the study they have done and what they have provided us. As y'all know, y'all passed a new stormwater ordinance last January, and then we had a new stormwater manual approved as of September 1. And we have one of the strictest stormwater ordinances now in the state. So that's what we're going to be going on when we, you know, if this goes any further, that's what we'll be using to, to regulate this development as far as stormwater. And the improvements, they are proposing a couple of improvements with the subdivision that will help the neighborhood. One is the new culvert, a new additional culvert under Puddin Ridge Road at ditch number four, as well as a new and improved culvert at ditch number five under Puddin Ridge Road. So with those two improvements, that will help the neighborhood. And with the design on the stormwater pond, somebody mentioned that it went from two acres to four acres. That's in their planning and showing that the, what our new stormwater ordinance would require would be twice as many acres as far as pond, pond, stormwater pond size. Butch, back to your comments while ago about the groundwater, and the engineer touched on it. The stormwater storage will be above the seasonal high water table, which is about, it's controlled by the ditches in the area, somewhere on average about 18 inches below ground level. So any storage will have to be from 18 inches below the ground level above that. So this whole site will have to be built up. There will be a berm around the ponds. Now, the engineer said no a while ago, but.
I was trying to.
Yeah. So when, when that's built up, the key, and the key within a stormwater pond that we have in Currytuck County is the drawdown device and the release rate of what leaves that pond. So that can be designed to hold that water on site. So I'll turn it over to Eric if he'd like to say anything, but at least.
Can you just tell me real quick what a drawdown device is?
Yeah, a drawdown device is a device in a pond that when it, when the, when the storm comes and you get three or four inches of rain or whatever it's designed to hold, then that draws down that water in that pond.
Is it like a valve?
It's not a valve. It's a orifice.
Okay.
A different sized orifices. It draws down that storm flow, storm volume in that pond down to the bottom of that device. That volume is the stormwater storage that they have to store. It's released over a period of three to five days, not in an hour or two like a normal rainfall would be. It's stored in that pond. It's slowly released after three or four, five days, and then it's gone in order for the next storm to be able to store. In other words, the pond to be able to store.
Is this similar, where they've got a corral light, that pond up there, where they let the water down in that back, that pond? Don't they have something to let the water out?
Eric may be familiar with.
Mike, Mike, don't it just, it allows it to, allows it to release at a predetermined rate, not to overload the system?
Exactly right. Yeah.
All right.
I, I got one question. Now, far as, and I know we've touched on E Street and the different ditches and the pond size and all that stuff, and everybody in this room, anybody that rides through Moyac, if we get a three to four inch rain, parking lot at Food Line, is that going to assist in that? Not that that's their requirement. I'm just curious with all the different stuff coming on E and D Street. I mean, is that, you know, where you have a pond out there out front at Food Line?
Yeah, it, it wouldn't have an effect.
It wouldn't go that far out. Okay, I just, just curious.
It may during a storm. And the, the other issue that people do not understand is that anything that we design and has been designed is only designed for a 10-year, 24-hour storm, about six inches of rain. Yes, we have some flooding around five inches, you know, but that's, that's in the, the play, so to speak, from design to actual rainfall. When we get those six, seven, eight and 10-inch rains like we've had, something's going to flood. And if it floods now before, it's going, you know, flood after, regardless of, you know, what it's designed for. So the most flooding that, when we have a flooding, it's always in a big rainfall that we cannot do anything about. If we could control the rainfall, then we wouldn't have any flooding.
We wouldn't be here.
All right. Eric, you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. He did, he did a good job.
Unless you have a question for me.
I have none. Is anyone having questions? Okay, we'll move on the list. We have Ron Rose to sign up next.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Ron Rose. My office is in Moyac 102C, Moyac Commons Drive. I'm here tonight to represent the applicant. We've been dealing with this project for probably five years now. Originally, we came for a rezoning and have that parcel zone general business. We were going to extend Moyac Commons and Currytuck Commercial back on that parcel. We had a couple of businesses that wanted to come in. We were talking to a hotel at the time and a couple of other people that we were going to try to get to come in there. That rezoning was denied. So we tried to look at what else we could do with this parcel. Obviously, it came, residential was the next solution to come up with. So we proposed a pud, residential pud, and we got a lot of feedback on the density and multifamily. So we reduced that down and we've gone to more of a conservation type subdivision that allows two to the acre and about 40% open space. We have tried to design a nice project. We feel like it'll be a benefit to this area. The, this location is a full-service location which allows for this type of density. It's a perfect spot for an infill. You got commercial on one side, residential on the other. Eventually, this is going to be a residential development. It's going to be infill. Also, I'm the owner of Moyac Commons and a president of our own property owners association. We own the roads in that area. About four or five years ago, we, we had some change in ownership and we looked at going with the DOT and taking the roads over. But our members and landowners decided that we'd rather keep them private and control the roads ourselves. So that's what we've done. We set up a property owners association. We pay dues. We maintain the stormwater pond, the roads, that sort of thing. If you have any questions about roads, I'll, I'll try to answer them. I know Jim was up here before. Y'all have some questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, you can probably answer my question then, Ronnie. As Mr. Scanlon said, DOT's not going to go across the private ownership road of, that you were just speaking about, to go into the new subdivision to do any roadwork in there. What is y'all's plans for the roads and the maintenance of roads and all in the new subdivision? There's, there's my concern there.
Well, they'll be built to state main, state standards, which they have to be.
Right, I understand.
The property owners will take care of the roads. They'll maintain them, just like any other subdivision that's, that has private roads.
Is there going to be, is that going to be in the deed restrictions or in the covenants or whatever?
There'll be a homeowners association. They'll be professionally maintained and managed.
But we, we see it all the time to where this type of stuff was going to take place and then all of a sudden, nobody gets any money put in it or homeowners association don't function as it was supposed to. Or then you have roads that has holes that you can bury people in and everybody's screaming at us, why don't you fix the roads? We don't do roads.
Well, that's why we have professional management that's going to take care of, make sure it gets done.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm asking, the questions I'm asking.
Right.
So that this will be a professional management?
Right. We have prepared a preliminary easement to allow Moyac Commons subdivision to come through our roads.
Seen that.
And they've, they've agreed to contribute to the maintain, to our fund. We have a pretty good sized fund that we keep in the bank to maintain the roads. They've, they've agreed to contribute.
So you're telling me then, in, in the new subdivision, there will be provisions to ensure maintenance is done on those roads, they're maintained and kept up?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be part of the homeowners association to maintain the roads, the stormwater pond, the open space. And as far as the utilities, the sewer line goes down the middle of the, the road, so that, that will not interfere with any drainage. that, that will not interfere with any drainage. Now, the water lines will be on the shoulder, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rose, you had mentioned that your property owners association in the Moyoc Commons maintains the roads, the private road Moyoc Crossing. Are they willing to make the improvements necessary for that, for the safety of that intersection? I mean, you and I've had discussion on that and.
Moyoc Commons, we don't have anything to do with Moyoc Crossing, but.
Moyoc Commons, sorry.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have any plans to make any turn lanes or anything like we've talked about before. I don't know if we have the room, but, you know, obviously during preliminary plat, if y'all require us to do a.
I mean, is, is that a concern of the property association with, with the amount of traffic that's going to come through there?
We're looking forward to having the extra traffic and the people shopping in our shops and.
And I know that we've talked about the walkability as far as.
This will be connected with sidewalks, people will be able to walk to our commercial area, so.
So you do have some proposed improvements to Moyoc Crossing?
Oh, yeah.
At Commons, I keep saying that, sorry.
You better leave it.
One thing I'd like to add, I mean, I could speak, I guess it was maybe about two weeks ago, I was working patrol and there was a, looked like a landmined went off at the turn right there to go to the Mexican restaurant in your place, and it was fixed within the next day because I wrote to call you and tell you. I mean, y'all, I mean, that's one thing y'all have done, is taking care of that private road.
Well, the, the snow and the ice and all that we've had this year has put a.
Put a beating on it.
Yeah, we've had a lot of problems when we got the asphalt guy there just to warm it up.
It was within 24 hours.
I would, I would just like to add to the record, I live on a state maintained road and it ain't exactly the best road in the world either.
But at least you got somebody pointing a finger at and hollering at instead of us.
Can I, have you established what the HOA fees are?
We're looking at $200 a year per lot, but I don't know, we haven't got a budget yet.
All right, any other questions?
I'm going to ask one more, and I, and it's probably not relevant to what we're talking. What is the big picture for that whole complex? And I know there's been talk about the other 225 acre parcels. Does it all relate? Is, I mean, is this?
Well, we don't have any plans right now. We don't own those other parcels. They're, they're owned by two different families. I mean, I, I could eventually see that being developed all the way back to Quail Run, connected to Quail Run. Maybe some, you know, Jim and I have talked about, that would be a good idea to put the ponds back on the back, to get some distance from Quail Run, maybe have some estate sized lots back in the back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rose. George Winslow.
The adjacent farms, the Lindsay Farm, just to the presumably called the south of the property. The ditch that goes between this subject property and, and the, the shopping center, how is that designated? What ditch? And how will it discharge with the new drainage system? Well, discharge towards the creek.
Ditch four.
Between the shopping center and the full length of the prop, this subject property, there's a ditch.
Ditch, ditch four and it discharges to Shingle Landing Creek.
And with the improvements being done to ditch four and underneath the Puttin Ridge Road to Shingle Landing Creek, could the opposite end of that ditch be dammed up? That way I'll have no problem. Because right now, my problem's with that ditch. Regardless of what everybody says coming up here, that ditch flows both ways. It flows both ways, it goes to my farm. It floods my farm. We have, it's heavy rains, which we're only supposed to have once in every 10 years, which is now happening once in every five years. I get flooded. That ditch goes into Lindsay Ditch, which goes all, that whole farm drains to the Lindsay Ditch. None of it drains over towards the, the opposite side of the farm, none of it. It all drains to the, it doesn't even drain to 168 till it gets to the Lindsay Ditch. So that whole farm drains to the Lindsay Ditch. It goes down the Lindsay Ditch, which, which runs the whole length of the farm, almost the whole length of the farm, down to 168. The pipes under 168 are too small. Then the, then the, after it gets under 168, it goes underneath the, the railroad track and that culvert, which is, is way too small as well. Both of those dam it up, dam the water up in, in the Lindsay Ditch. So if the opposite end of this ditch number four, which I presume is what we're talking about, is dammed up, which is adjacent to the Lindsay Ditch, I've got no problem. That means there will be no water from that ditch, ditch number four going into the Lindsay Ditch, period.
I think Mr. Winslow would probably be best answered by one of the gentlemen that's here tonight, if he'd come forward, maybe he can answer that.
Real quick, is the Lindsay Ditch, sir, is the Lindsay Ditch the one running beside Charlie High?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you, can you answer his question?
Yes, sir. Your, your question is about the ditch between the, the subject property and the commercial ditch?
Comes to here, yes.
Yes, sir.
Could it be, could it be dammed up right here so there's no discharge?
That's right.
No discharge coming into this Lindsay Ditch, which is ditch here.
There's a concrete, we are there now, right, and they pump.
It goes right over the top of it. I have seen it with my own eyes. It gets so much water, it goes right over top of that thing.
Yes, sir. To answer the question, is the proposed development does not rely on that ditch. The, the lots and, and the roads and even the, the conservation area, the open space area to the, basically the south, will all come back to the lake, to the proposed lake system. So in effect, now, Eric, I haven't done these calculations yet, but there is some drainage acre, there is some drainage going to that ditch now from this property. So in effect, I haven't done that calculation yet, but there'll be less drainage going to that ditch in the future with the development than there is now. Because all the drainage from the property with the development will go to Shingles Landing Creek. I haven't, we haven't done those calculations yet, but there is drainage area that goes to your ditch from this property.
So, so what you're saying is, is part of your plan will be to move it north?
Yes, sir. The, the flows from the development will all go to Shingles Landing Creek under Puttin Ridge Road.
Which is north?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Away from that.
Can y'all require a bond for that? In other words, if I get flooded, who pays?
Sir, how many?
Other than me.
How many acres is your property that, I mean, and that's currently farmed, if I'm not mistaken?
300, and approximately 50 of it floods out.
You're, you're the property where everybody sees the stacked up bales of hay and so forth and so.
In the back, yeah.
Yes, sir, okay.
What happens, the, the height of the water coming out of this ditch in ditch number four into the Lindsay Ditch is sufficient enough that it backs water up, the rest of the Lindsay Ditch cannot flow until the water is decreased from wherever the water from this ditch number four is coming from. Whether it's coming from the parking lots or the land or, or the subject land, I don't know. But the water will get so high in, in heavy storm rains, it'll back the water up to Lindsay Ditch for three quarters of a mile, half a mile, three quarters of a mile, until the water drains out from this, this property along the highway.
Are you saying the reason the Lindsay Ditch floods, in your opinion? I know you're.
I've seen the water.
I know, what I'm saying is, is the culvert under 168 too small?
Oh, way too small. And when they were wide in the road, I told the engineer, I said, look, this, you need, what they did is down there at, at the stoplight, the stoplight fell down where you turn, go to Eagle Creek. They've got a huge pipe under that road. I think the thing must be five, six foot in diameter, big pipe. My farm doesn't even use that pipe. And I told them, I said, look, you need to, the, where the Lindsay Ditch goes underneath the highway, you need to have larger pipe there. And the engineer looked at me like I was crazy, like I didn't know what I was talking about.
We're, we're working on that, so.
I, I mean, I talked to them when they were, when they were working on the road because I, they, they took part of the road front, obviously part of the, the farm frontage to widen that road, it all came off my side. And, and, no, they weren't going to put any more drainage underneath the highway. That would have been the time to do it. Instead, they put this five, six foot pipe in down the other end, which has very, very little flow, extremely little flow going underneath it.
It's minimal.
Hmm? Minimal.
It's very minimal.
Yeah, very minimal. That's the size pipe that needed at the Lindsay Ditch.
What, when you said you have 300 acres and you said roughly 50 of it's always flooded?
If, when you have heavy rains, if the, the back flooding, the Lindsay, the, the three quarter, well, everything from, from that ditch number four running west cannot flow until all, most of the water has drained out of ditch four.
Okay.
Because that, with that water rushing out of ditch four, it's like a dam. It just stops the water from coming, from, from the west end of the Lindsay Ditch. Then when the water head is finally reduced down, fallen enough where the rest of the ditch can then flow on over underneath the highway. Now, when it gets to the highway, if you go there during the heavy rain, it's just backed up there at the highway because of that little 36-inch pipe. I think that's the same problem the gentleman was talking about back in August, about, I think he lived on E Street or somewhere, that, that he was having problems there with, with the water backing up, not going underneath the highway. So I don't know, you got, you got a tiger by the tail here.
You're telling us.
Another thing, there's another thing nobody's mentioned. Now, I'm going to mention it. Water table's rising and one of the biggest problems with Moyoc, yes, Moyoc's low, water does not flow uphill. So until all that water way downstream has finally gotten out of the way, that's when Moyoc's going to start draining. You're on the tail end of it. So it might take a week for that water to get downstream, to get the head to get sufficiently low enough for Moyoc to drain. Another thing you might have to think about, pumps on those ponds, where in dry weather, you pump those, you pump those ponds darn near dry. So you have a, a big enough reservoir to hold these big rains, which we're getting more of. So I don't know. I'm glad you're the elected officials with the big money.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you listening to me and, and.
Chairman, if we may, could Mike, I mean, Mike Doxy is, and I don't know if everybody knows Mike, but if there's drainage or there's water, Mike knows where it drains and where it doesn't drain in Currytuck. Is that something he could answer?
Well, Frank Williams on the other side of the road now, he's, he's cleaned out his ditches on the other side of, of 168 and Sawyer Road and that, they've been cleaned out, but still, until you get some bigger pipes under, under 168, all that clean on the other side is not helping me at all.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've still got about nine or 10 more people signed up. Do you have any comment on that, Mr. Doxy, since Mr. Petrie asked you?
The, the Lindsay Ditch that he was talking about is ditch number one in the Moyoc Service District. Ditch number four from the Food Line does drain that away, but it is blocked by a cement box with a pump in it for a groundwater lowering pump for the sewage treatment plant that used to be there to work. So it's no way, now, he says water rushes down, you know, into the Lindsay Ditch, but it's no way water can rush into the Lindsay Ditch because of that box. So that's, and, and I believe anything, any issues that Mr. Winslow has with, with Moyoc Commons draining into his ditch, it would be a civil matter between those people.
Thank you.
Is that box still in use? I mean, if that box were removed, would it, would it make a difference?
Well, the jury is in on that box. I've been trying to get it removed now for a couple of years, simply because the pumps, they keep having trouble with the pumps. It costs a lot of money to keep those pumps maintained, to pump the groundwater down. So Eric would have to answer that question about, you know, whether they can or cannot remove those pumps, and I'll let him touch on that.
Is it your recommendation to, to move the box and the pump?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's. That box is to prevent water from coming in on us. We have to pump water out to maintain our water level in our wastewater plant, so we build the box there to keep the Lindsay Ditch water from coming in on us.
Okay.
I do feel like the real problem's under 168.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. And I have some handouts, if I may make them available to you. That is a study that was done back in 2010 of this particular piece of property and also pictures that were taken not after a storm event. You can call a thunderstorm that, but this was a heavy rain. And this is ditch number four in front of my house with the connecting ditches. So if I can.
Hand those to Mr. Woody, please.
Okay.
And he'll pass them down.
All right. There's pertinent information in there about that piece of, of property and the, the water table, the clay composition, the silt, the percentage of sand, and the poor drainage, of course, meaning a high runoff. It also goes into some acidity, release of heavy metals and promoting soil leaching. The permeability is slow to very slow, and the water table at 18 inches below the surface at most. Soil has a high plasticity due to the clay content. It undergoes expansion with high moisture and contraction with low moisture. Loss of soil moisture due to heavy pumping in, in the pumping regard can cause structural damage to buildings, if that were the case, on the adjacent properties. Also, the, the, the soil not being suitable for shallow excavation because the cut banks can, can collapse. So again, I, I offer that as information and I offer the pictures that were taken in front of my house, that is ditch number four. But the intersecting ditches are running east and west. These ditches are on B Street and again, on, on ditch number four. I've lived in Moyoc for approximately 34 years. We have been in a road maintenance program of our own because we live on private lanes. And so my husband is constantly getting crush and run, ore stone and fill to keep these passable to our homes. So to even insinuate that a homeowners association should be liable or responsible for the upkeep in their neighborhood, I find ludicrous. I don't believe that homeowner associations should be a forced commitment for the uninformed prospective home buyers that don't understand the pond maintenance cost and liabilities. And that the county is not going to be maintaining or manicuring these areas. The ponds that are behind the Food Line now are not well-kept. They do overflow. This is a part of, of what the residents that would move into that 27 acres would overlook is two existing ponds and an abandoned sewer treatment plant that we have, have discussed tonight. Then on top of that, we're, we're seeing in this proposal that there would be two other ponds that would be dug, all to accommodate an initial proposed conceptual development. There leaves a whole lot of questions and concerns in my mind, since I have served on the Stormwater District Committee, and that was at its inception, due to my concern of what was to come with the development in my community. And a lot of other people were having that problem because they could not afford individually to take care of the drainage problems around their homes. So collectively, there was a, a tax levy that has helped with a systematic cleaning of these ditches. I'm also a part of the Concerned Citizens of Moyoc. We are a group of residents that have come together with common interests and concerns for the community and the quality of life in Moyoc. Tonight, talking about this Moyoc Commons behind the Food Line Shopping Center is where I want to express my concerns. I feel that this type of urban plan for a rural area is inconsistent with the surrounding homes, the lot sizes are too small, and it's not compatible with a commercial shopping center. The statement that's been made about the sidewalks, just, just let me point out a couple of things. This area that the development will be fronting is going to have. This area that the development will be fronting is going to have, in my opinion, a less desirable appeal because of it being behind the shopping center with dumpsters, loading and unloading of vendor trucks, stormwater holding ponds, and the abandoned sewer treatment plant. Those are the things that not only adults, but we're talking about children, are gonna have to sidewalk buy, and they are a liability to the people that would possibly buy into this. A part of what has been studied is with this small area plan, and I do believe that that will put some emphasis on what people want to see in the community. The quarter acre lots are something that most people, if you ask them why they want to move to the country or to Moayak, they're coming to our area because it is a rural country setting that they're looking for. It doesn't necessarily have to be a three or five acre parcel, but they're not coming into this area for a quarter acre lot with a slab home built on it. A crawl space definitely would also be a benefit, since this is a non-permeable soil that's being developed. We've talked about this, this area being built up. Well, okay, so if you build it up, the, the 18 inches plus whatever, and I am not an engineer, but it is just, I guess, common sense to think about this particular area having to be built up to a point that it's gonna allow drainage away from homes that are gonna be proposed and conceptual and drained properly. So, the drainage off of the property that is being built up will impact the rest of the area. From the pictures that I've provided you, this stormwater runoff is due to the non-permeable soil not being able to accept the absorption of not a hurricane, but this is a thunderstorm, where we had over a weekend, I don't know the inches, but I know that the ditch in front of my house, which was ditch four, could not drain adequately. Also, in the past, when I've served on the Stormwater Committee, the North Carolina Department of Transportation was contacted about the culvert problems on Pooten Ridge Road, and also how the widening of Route 158 has created a water damming effect in Moayak. They have yet to come up with solutions for adequate culvert dimensions, and yet we have a developer stating that they're gonna make it better. But, again, we have issues with all of this area draining into these ditches, and the debris and the overgrowth and things of that nature play into it, and a lot of that would come from these areas that are gonna be higher than the village of Moayak. The other thing that is a concern is that Pooten Ridge Road is a secondary, narrow road that has become more and more overloaded with traffic that comes and goes to Blackwater, Z, whatever their, their name is now. We have heavy trucks, we have a lot of buses, we have a lot of traffic on that, and to even imply that we're gonna put more traffic into that area, until we have been able to address some of these ongoing problems, I, I don't see how that that conditional rezoning could be allowed. We're talking about a possible 100 residents, and that's not including children, on quarter acre lots with vehicles, recreational craft, and it's already problematic with traffic and parking and the area in general. I just feel like that we are opening up a can of worms to allow this kind of development because, as Mr. Rose has indicated, there are two other parcels. So, whatever is done with this particular parcel of land, it is setting a precedent in Moayak. And as a member of the concerned citizens, we are asking that you please hear us on some of these concerns. We are not anti-development, that is not the problem. We are just asking that the development be done, I've got to see where I wrote that earlier, but, that it be done with responsible growth and consistency with, with all of the developments that will enhance the community and give increased home values and bring residents that want to stay and invest in their community, not residents that perhaps are gonna be in a transient situation where they're gonna buy a smaller-sized home and a smaller-sized lot. And so, I just ask that you listen to the concerned citizens and what I've had to say tonight. And, and also, I will, as a caveat to this, say that Ron Rose was a neighbor of mine for many years. My children babysat his children when they were growing up. I have nothing personally against Ron. I just don't happen to agree with some of what he wants to do with the development. I walk my dog every morning, and Mr. Rose has built a home that's on D Street. It's a nice-looking house. It's on an acre, a piece of property, nice-looking house. It's on a crawl space, it has a garage. I actually have been in the house. It is what I feel Moayak can be proud of, and I told him so. I told him that this is the kind of home that Moayak needs and we could all be proud of. So, again, I don't agree with some of the things he's doing, but this is not a vendetta against Mr. Rose and what he's, he's trying to do. I think he can do the right thing, and I think that piece of property needs to be revisited for exactly what it's being used for. Thank you.
Ms. Lusk?
Yes.
I have a quick question for you. You've mentioned that you were on the Stormwater District, the Moayak Stormwater District Committee.
Yes.
And I've sat in a few meetings with you on that, and the tax, or, or the pennies or whatever that is generated to maintain the ditches that, that's under the Moayak Stormwater District. I, I'm kinda putting you on the spot, but give me an estimate of what is spent annually to clear a few of those ditches.
Okay.
And, and the efforts that you, as individuals, have had to put forth to, to maintain those ditches.
I would have to defer to Mike Doxy. Mike Doxy is the one who gets the bids for the contractors that are gonna come through to do these, these ditches and the cleanouts. And, as I said, it's systematic. Wherever they have started and they work to, then it will, if the money is not there, then it stops, and then when it's there, again, it picks up and proceeds from there. But Mike would be a better person to ask. I believe that the tax is one and a half cent per hundred, which is minimal. At one time, we did discuss about enlarging the Stormwater District because of the interconnectivity of all these ditches. And we knew that people over on Tulsa Creek Road and some of these other newer subdivisions going in could possibly have a, a positive impact with their property draining as well.
But your experience is, because you've been working with this Moayak Stormwater for many years.
I haven't.
This isn't just since this development has been proposed.
Oh, by no means. This goes back, I, I hate to even tell you the year.
It's okay.
But I, I got immersed in this because of the problems that I was experiencing at my house with flooding and the non-permeable soil, and became very knowledgeable about the stormwater runoff. So, that's been my experience with it, and I continue to learn. Part of the Concerned Citizens of Moayak is to put information out on Facebook so that new residents that are coming into our community can maybe be empowered and realize what they're getting into. A lot of them are moving from Virginia or, or other areas into our area. They're not used to having to take care of streets, holding ponds, and some of the other things. And, and I think that it is a very big disservice that we do to potential homebuyers by not letting them understand and know what they're gonna be responsible for. The homeowners association that Ron said it would be, you know, things written into that, people, you know, that's, that is gonna be something that they need to be educated about, and that's by, you know, these, these roads and things that have got to be taken care of by someone. And if the county's not gonna do it, then the homeowners need to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. David, you had a question for Mr. Woody?
I did, for Mr. Woody.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lusk, you brought up numerous issues, all of them relevant, but one of them, I think you spoke to the, I think the maybe inconsistency with the small area plan of Moayak, and we just had a workshop here just prior to this meeting. And I would ask, Ben, relative to the small area planning and the location and the proposed development here, based on what we just had in the workshop, what is the small area planning? Is this consistent, inconsistent? Does it fit? If you could speak to that.
The, the small area plan, which staff has prepared, still indicates this, this area, this core of Moayak is full service. So, in that, in that sense, it's basically the same land use designation. Probably the biggest difference in the small area plan is it does highlight the need to have transitional or compatibility standards. So, and those aren't developed, you know, as an output of the plan, so it's, it's, I don't know that the small area plan would necessarily change the density of any of this, but it would, I think, influence perhaps buffering or, or having, you know, a state locked on the perimeter or those types of transitions. I, I think those would probably have a little more, be a little more at play with the small area plan.
So, this area's not changing from the full service?
It's still full service, that's correct.
And what is the densities allowed in full service?
It can be from two to four acres.
Two to four...
Dwelling units per acre.
Two to four dwelling units per acre. So, you're saying this is consistent with what's being proposed to the board, density-wise?
In, in terms of density, yes. Now, from, I wanna say, from the small area plan, it, it, it would have another lens to look through in terms of design of, of the subdivision that wasn't looked through in this.
All right. How about we take a five-minute break? I think Vance couldn't wait, and I think the rest of us need a five-minute break. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and resume the public hearing. At this time, we have Joe Drago as signed up. Drago, rather, I'm sorry.
I'm Joe Drago from 225 Moayak Landing, and you're probably thinking, what is she doing over here? I'm over here because I'd like to address stormwater, and everybody's used the word runoff, and I'd just like to make sure I understand runoff. Runoff is when we water our lawns, whichever one that, whether it be fertilizer, pesticides, dirty waters from cars, animal, pet waste, stuff dropped at construction sites, garbage, plastic bags, any kind of waste, fast food wrappers, styrofoam cups, all that stuff that, you know, we as neighbors don't do, right? Just people come right now 168, just throw stuff out the windows all the time, goes in our ditches. Well, actually, there's a lot of people that, as neighbors, do, not consciously. They are not used to, like Ms. Lusk said, packing up and taking their stuff to the dump. So, they put out these big trash cans. They're not used to the wind out here. The next thing you know, those trash cans blow over, and there goes the garbage and, and waste, and you say, well, what does this have to do with stormwater? Well, it has to do a lot with stormwater, as we all know. And those pumps and all, a lot of them are hard to work because of the wear and tear with the water, you know, mechanical, the rust. They also have to be maintained, and, and I wonder who somebody's gonna go over there on a weekly basis, or how are they gonna do it since the county doesn't do that? I guess the last thing was, I'm, I'm affected by this, is because if they finally get all this water drained out of Quail Run, here it comes down into Shingle Landing Creek. Woo, there we go with Moayak Landing. We've already got enough water problems, but here comes some more. So, I'm thinking, maybe we should get some preliminary studies done before we try to add anything else to it and complicate it, and get our problems that we already know we have, get those fixed, and then at that time, welcome in some more development. But until we get what we've got fixed, we're just adding salt to the wound or insult to injury. And the other thing that concerns me is with all this runoff, which I've defined some of it, our water quality, our fish and our birds, some of the main reasons why we like to come, we like this rural setting, is because of that. And we, this stuff, if we don't treat this water before we just throw it down into Shingle Landing, which we know goes out to Tulsa Creek, then goes to Tulsa Bay, out to the Sound, it doesn't take it long before we have algae blooms, we erode our ditches, we erode our creeks, and finally, so many fish and birds have been found with their bellies full of cigarette butts, plastic stuff, all kinds of stuff. That's not what we want. That's not what we see in Moayak, and that's not why I moved here and the people that still want to move here for that reason. So, I think we should consider our problems that we have now, see if we can't get them fixed, and then sit down and invite new development to come in. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sherri Payne.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Payne. I live in Quail Run on Brookdale Court, and I back up to ditch number five. And my husband and I have the distinction of having built the last house that was built in Quail Run. And I learned a lot about row and oak soil, which is what we have there, which has been referred to as the semi-permeable soil. When we built, we were quite a few years after the house that had been built prior to us, and all of our neighbors have septic systems that have 300 feet of septic lines. When we built in 2006, we were required to put in 600 feet. Now, I don't think our personal property right there had changed that much over all of our neighbors. I think the problem is that we learn more about the soil and what development does when we cover it up. It's already very difficult for it to drain, but when we start adding roadways and driveways and footprints of houses, it makes a big difference. Our calculation was made based partly on the footprint of our house, the detached garage, the patio, and the driveway. So, when you start covering it up, you are adding to the factor of absorption. And so, I just wanted to share that with you, along with my first shock in Moayak was when our house was being built. We showed up on a Saturday to see what was going on and what everything looked like. We were all excited, and it started to rain. Hadn't been particularly dry, hadn't been particularly wet, just sort of normal. Started to rain, started to rain a little harder, started to rain a little harder, and lo and behold, the entire road was covered, and the porta potty that was sitting out there required for the construction floated away. Now, I have a couple of degrees, but I don't have one in engineering, but I do know that my yard floods, and I look like I live on an island. The two swales between my neighbors look like little rivers. Ditch number five comes up to the surface of our yard, and you can't see the pavement on the road, and that's on a regular basis. Sometimes it's an nor'easter, sometimes it's a hurricane, but sometimes it's also just a good old-fashioned rainstorm or an abundance of rain like we've seen recently this winter. So, I'm very concerned that if you put in more roads and more footprints of houses and driveways, that we're just compounding the problem. And I agree with what's been said before, we need to look at perhaps fixing the problem before we add to. before we add to it. Thank you for your time.
Can I, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sherri?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you one quick question? You're in the cul-de-sac in the back of Brookdale, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
Thank you.
Florence Gaff.
My name is Florence Gaff. I live at 128 Sims Road, which is my house faces Food Line. My concern is stormwater runoff, and my concern is four acres of pond. I have pictures here to show you that I took with no rain that shows the pond is overflowing. The ditch from Taylor's cannot drain in that pond. And when we do have a rain, my yard is a pond, because they're going to build up, so it's going to flash flood even more toward our direction. So I ask you to really consider the ponds that are going in, and if the groundwater level is overflowing at this point, what is it going to do when a hurricane or something like that comes at four or five inches rate? That pond does not drop that much even in a drought. I would invite anybody to go back to Food Line. You see it in the front flooding, which goes with the back. I live there, and I see it every day. It does not drain. Look at the second picture on the second page, and you'll see the ditch going to the pond there. It doesn't even drain. It can't drain because the pond is higher than the ditch to drain the water to, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaff. Next, we have James Sanderlin.
My name is James Sanderlin. Been coming here, well, 194 Putten Ridge Road. Been coming here for the last 15 years. In fact, I'm almost embarrassed, and you people should be embarrassed, that somebody has to come back 15 years and we haven't solved the problem. Like I said, I'm glad to see somebody, Mr. Petrie, has some common sense there about these ponds. Ponds do not work in Currituck County. Every one of you that's lived here knows that. The water table is clean up to the top. In fact, farmers dug ponds to water the cattle with even through droughts, because the water table was so high here for years. Also, there is flooding north of Putten Ridge Road. Everybody acts like there's only flooding on the south side of Putten Ridge Road. There's flooding on the north part of Putten Ridge Road. During one of the big storms, the water came right across. So if they're going to build ditches, they need to extend them all the way down to Shingle Creek Road. Just putting culverts under those pipes is not going to solve all the water problems if the ditch isn't big enough on the north side of Putten Ridge Road. And if you look, there's flooding problems, and even the county commissioners, over the 15 years that I've been coming here, have admitted themselves, there's great flooding problems in Moayoc for years. And here's something else I'd like to ask. When you put in that sewer system, you said it was going to be for industry, and industry only. Private owners weren't going to be allowed to hook up. If you've got excess capacity, why don't you let the people who already live there hook up to the sewer system, instead of having people come in with housing developments to hook up the sewer system? There's a lot of us that have had septic tank problems over the years. We'd love to hook up to your sewer system if you've got excess to it. So why not take us into consideration, rather than you people coming in? Now, thank you very much. Here, one other thing. This flooding problem in Currituck County is not only Moayoc, it's the whole county. It's not going to go away. The only way it's going to ever go away, or any, or to be resolved in any manner, is if the county commissioners or the county take over the responsibility for drainage. Individuals cannot do it, and you get more and more individuals in the county all the time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sanderlin, I'd just like to add that if there is people here that wish to hook into it, I don't think anybody said they couldn't. Do you can give it to the county manager?
Well, when you originally said that it was for businesses along 168, is my understanding.
I'm just stating the facts. If anybody here would like to hook into it, they can give it to the county manager, and he'll...
Will you run it down my road? I'll probably be thinking about hooking up to it.
You can speak with the county manager and see what it would take to do it.
Mr. Scannell, will you be running it down Putten Ridge Road? We've got a lot of homes there who'd like to hook up.
And it's not something we're going to resolve tonight, but if you would like to have that conversation, we'll have it.
Quail Run and everybody else, instead of inviting all these people to make money, to hook up to it, why don't let the people hook up to it? Run us a line down Putten Ridge Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderlin. Next, we have Ann Sanderlin. He said he wanted to hook up. We can.
He's passed out.
Oh, Dan's. Ms. Sanderlin, pass her time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Marvin Scaff.
My name is Marvin Scaff, and 128 Sims Street in Moayoc, which is pretty well joined this new project. And we've got some math problems. I want somebody to explain to me. So we've got 27 acres we're going to develop. We've got four acres reserved for woodland, we've got over four acres of pond, we've got streets, but we're going to come up with 55 half-acre lots. Now, I can't figure out how they're going to do that. That has puzzled me for quite a while. Ain't no way you're going to get 55 half-acre lots in what's left. And there was a gentleman proposed damming the end of ditch four. Well, if they dam that ditch, we're going to be in worse shape than what we are now. We're flooded now with it in open, and the water can run that way. And they are proposing running a pipeline from this new pond they're proposing down to Putten Ridge Road. What's going to happen to the ditch line that we drain in now? Are they going to provide some kind of drainage for us? What is going to happen? I'm very concerned. I've been there for 50 years, and I've fought this drainage for the last 15 years, I know, trying to get something done. And I appreciate a little bit of help. And there was one of you gentlemen brought up how deep these ponds were going to be. That is a mute point, how deep the ponds is going to be, when you've got groundwater within six or eight inches of the ground level already there. What good is that extra four, eight, 10, 15 feet you've got down there going to do you? You've got to get rid of the water, and the only way to do it is going to have to do some ditching, and we're going to have some help from somebody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scaff. Mr. Scaff? That was an excellent question you had when you first come up with the math. And I want to say it's an excellent question, because it was one I had a couple of months ago. So I'd like to refer that to Mr. Woody to explain how they come up with it.
I would like to share that, too.
Because that was a question that I had. So I'm not going to let you get total credit for it, because I did ask him, I've asked him about that.
Thank you. I'm glad I had some help on it.
We'll share the credit. We'll share the credit.
The number one thing is, the lots are smaller than a half acre. They're closer to a quarter acre. So that would double the math. Number two is, when you pull a density, it's a gross density. So you would take 27.66 acres and multiply that times two. That gives you 55. At that point, you have the right to build 55 lots. Forty percent of the site must be open space. Now, within that open space, you can place the stormwater infrastructure. That leaves you 6% of developable land. You say about 10% of that's probably right-ofways. So about 50% of the land's probably developable. So you are then able to fit, in this case, 55 lots on 50% of the 27-acre tract. And that's the math.
Okay, well, I think, just trying to simplify it a little bit, the way I try to understand it is, what the county does when they determine density is they take the entirety of the acreage. In this case, it's 27 acres. Whatever is non-buildable is given as credit to determine the overall density for the entirety of the property or the development. In this case, 27 acres. So that's how you get to the math of it. And that was a good question, Mr. Scaff.
Thank you. Next, we have Charles Ely.
Hello, Charles Ely, 596 Currituck Highway. I'm not going to get into the drainage like I did last time I was here, show you pictures of me and my wife out there in the boat fishing in my front yard, but it's still no better. But what I want to address tonight is the safety issue. Coming in between the Burger King and Gateway Bank, private property, they got the stoplight, but during the summer months particularly, these tourists going to the beach, there's double four lanes, two going one way, two on the other, they stop at Survey Road at that light. They stop at the one at Burger King. They block the intersection. They don't leave it open. They block it. So if anybody's trying to get out, they can't. I've been in that position several times, and there's no way you can stop them from blocking the intersection. And we got a deputy, he's seen it up bad. They hurry to get to the beach, they stop, and everybody just starts bumping to bumper. It's blocked. Light changes. If you can get out, no more than about four cars at a time can get out. You wait there for half a day, it seems like. And also, that's a private road, going back to a private subdivision with private roads. School buses don't go down that. They don't go on private property. And how do they go get the students out to the school bus? Coming beside of, there's two state roads back in that subdivision. One's comes in by the woods, and the other one goes by Sonic and down that. They're state roads, but it's not a state road going back in there. What are you going to do about that? And another thing with these schools, I checked with the school system, we've got two schools in Moayoc, elementary and a junior high. One of them's 30 students from capacity, one of them's 40 students. If you put 50-some houses out there with two students to the house, what are you going to do for school space? Our tax money's going to have to build more schools to put them back there. That's a big concern of mine. I also thought, and it's been mentioned tonight, that the sewer system was put in for businesses. But now you're opening up the development. What are the businesses going to hook up to if they come? I think you've got the horse before the cart before the horse on this. A business creates money, revenue for the county. I personally have a business. I'm in a business zone, have a business inside of my house, it's custom picture framing. In 2009, before the bottom fell out of everything, I paid more to the county in the sales tax that I collected than I did personal property tax. And this is a small backyard business, I call it. A big business comes in, it creates jobs, it creates revenue. Housing development doesn't. On a 200, according to the county, on a $250,000 house, they are paid roughly $1,500 taxes on property taxes. Two students do the house, it costs $2,400 a student to educate them for a year. That's what the school board told me. So, you know, you're going behind completely if only this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Paul Garrett.
Paul Garrett, South Mills Road, Moayoc. And I ask that you approve this.
Thank you. And that is the last person I have signed up. Is there anyone that didn't have a chance to speak that wishes to speak?
I'd like to make one statement. I forgot when I was up there.
We need to come back to the mic, please.
I forgot to mention this. It's been said before that this is all private property. That E-road that he keeps talking about, that ditch number four, it has big trees around it, and the ditch is almost filled up now, and it's surrounded by private property. How about if, say, somebody from New York City buys that shopping center, put a $10 toll on the road to get back to the housing development? You've got private property surrounded by private property and no public roadway. I don't see how that can work at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question right before we broke. I believe Ms. Luff was the one that stated. Who did your sole, I mean, the sole sample test? Was that done through the NC State?
That was done by an individual who has lived, or had lived in Moayoc, and she has since moved to Kentucky and is working there by way of a grant. And she had an agricultural background and was able to pull the information off of the state website, as well as her knowledge of agriculture. And so that's how that came to be, so that, because the average person, myself included on that, would not understand some of these percentages that she has offered in her study of that. Her name was Ann Radens, and so she was the one who was responsible for getting that information together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And last, everybody's had a turn now, we can't keep, everybody can't have two turns, but go ahead, Joe.
I just wanted to kind of answer Kevin's question a little bit. The Indians gave Putten Ridge their name. They called it Jelly Earth, and that's the technical name that Peggy just put on it, but it came from the Indians.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple more questions. I'm still hung up on this road issue, and I've had an opportunity to talk to the county engineer on it. But, Mr. Woody, on this private road that is to go through the Moayoc Commons Drive, can we put some kind of stipulation on who's going to maintain these roads? Is there a bond that we can put on? I mean, is there, can this bond be put till infinity? I'm just, I'm really concerned that we have, you know, a homeowners association and try to address, under our new UDO, HOAs. We had lots of issues in Shingle Landing with trying to bring those roads to state standards. If the opportunity isn't there for these roads in this development to become state-maintained and the property, the road, and I'm referring to the Moayoc Commons Drive, what can we do? I mean, you know, the covenants of the HOA...
The roads within the subdivision under the new UDO, those, when the developer builds the roads, he or she will have to establish a reserve fund. And that's an account in the name of the HOA that equals 10% of the total infrastructure cost. So whenever, at 50% of lot sales, the infrastructure, the roads and the stormwater ponds, for example, are then transitioned or transferred from the developer to the HOA, what will happen is, at that point, the HOA will have access to that reserve fund in their name, equalling 10% of the total cost of the infrastructure. So there will be money under the new UDO available to HOAs that assume infrastructure in their subdivision. Now, in terms of Moayoc Commons Drive for the shopping center, it is a private drive, but it's dedicated for public use. So you couldn't, the developer couldn't go in and block access to that drive.
Okay, so that's not a possibility, that if someone came in and purchased that development, the shopping center, there couldn't be any...
It's a private street, but it's dedicated for public use.
Okay, so...
And that is on the, is on the ownership certificate signed on the plaque. I looked at it today before I came in.
How is the compatibility or the guidance going to be sent forth? The developer now is partnering with Moayoc Commons to maintain that thoroughfare.
That would be things that we would have to work through in the preliminary plat, if this zoning's approved. As a board, I think you certainly have the right to ensure that facilities that are used to access a development are up to whatever, in this case... used to access a development are, are up to whatever, in this case, DOT standards. So I think you send your purview, if this comes back as a preliminary plat, to begin to develop the answers to some of those questions.
Um, Mr. Weatherly, do you want to elaborate a little bit on, on what we just talked about as far as the, how the roads?
Well, um, excuse me. Certainly, there is a concern about maintenance of the road coming in through that existing commercial park and how a subdivision could interact with a commercial park to maintain that section of the road. So if there was something that we could do to ensure that that road is maintained and I don't know if a, a bond or, but, um, I, I understand the point. I don't have the answer, though. But it is a, a concern.
Mr. Mr. Woody, I have a question too, reference to the road. Mr. Ely brought it up, um, and I'm, was sitting here thinking of different subdivisions in the county where they're private roads. Uh, Carolina Village off of Backwoods Road, the school bus, every kid that lives in that neighborhood comes from the back three hundred yards and they all, there's one bus stop at the front. Are the schools, and we might not have anybody here that can answer that, are the schools allowed to ride back on a private, private property to pick up, you know, as far as the bus stop? I mean, is that something? I can't answer that question unless the manager or the attorney can.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
But, but I, I will say this, the, the school system is part of the technical review committee. So when, again, when preliminary plats are submitted, subdivision plats, they have the opportunity to review those plats. And there have been times that when they, the schools have made recommendations regarding bus pickup. Generally, it, it, when it's private streets, it typically involves creating turnarounds or areas at the, say, the front of a development where the school kids can be picked up. So I do know that they participate in this review process. Cause I know like in far as, you know, like in just, I mean, Quail Run, for example, you know, there's a couple spots where there's not adequate turnarounds, which, you know, Quail Run's been there for a lot longer. So I didn't know if that was something that factored into a play, because, you know, like I said, I was using Carolina Village as an example.
Does a bus go down Shingle Landing?
I, 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 I think probably one of the controlling-
Well, Shingle Landing's still private roads.
I, I think one of, well, I think one of the, I think one of the considerations or probably one of the relevant factors in this is we may be confusing private per se as, and, but we're also calling it public vehicular area or public vehicular road, which has a specific definition. And I think that most likely, um, we can talk to the county manager, but I think there is a difference between a public vehicular area or, and a private road per se. So that's maybe why you get a school bus going down Shingle Landing, because that's open to the public.
It's, it's considered a PVA. It, that, I mean, like you said, like he said, a public vehicular area.
We're, we're, we're using two different terms. I mean, we're using private road and public vehicular area for the purpose of the school.
Well, if it's private road dedicated to the public, a bus can go down it.
That, that would be my understanding.
If it's a private road that's private, then that's different, is probably the difference.
That's my understanding.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
The road at the end of the development that, right at the, at the two and a half acre lake, that shows a road there. Am I assuming that that's going to be, looks like it opens onto E Street? If you, I mean, I'm just looking at the rendering here, and it looks like it's gray and it's a road, and it goes into E Street.
Yes, sir. That was placed there to promote interconnectivity in the event that it was, uh, let's say that E Street was, uh, was deemed not for public driving, but in, at least at this point, it was purely for private access, we would offer that, we would put a gate across there and use it as an emergency access only, and it would be not open to vehicular traffic if the, uh, if it didn't rise to the same test that was just discussed by the board a moment ago. So that it was, uh, there, there is a system of streets in there. They are private, but there are a lot of people who live on them. And, you know, the, it, our intention would, would not to be, if they desired to, to, to drive on these streets in order to reach the shopping center without going out to Pudding Ridge and getting on 168, certainly, we, you know, we're, it, our, our intention is not to preclude them from using these streets if they so desire. If they felt like they did not want to and that their streets were defined otherwise from public access, then we would place a, we could shorten the street and/or put an emergency access gate for, uh, for use by, you know, the fire department and emergency access vehicles only.
Okay, but the road is definitely unapproved. I was there today, and, and I think Mrs. Lusk was talking about, her husband does crush and run. So if we open this up, that, there's, you know, that, there's no way that road can stand any more traffic than what's on it. And it really shouldn't, what's on there shouldn't be on there. But I'm just, I see this road right here, and I, I get alarms go off.
I see. And in, in order to avoid those alarms, we, we're not promoting, fronting any lots on there. There wouldn't be any driveways on that street. So we could shorten it up, include it in the open space, use it as a hammerhead turnaround for any, you know, uh, buses or other vehicles that might go in there and, uh, and not connect it and, uh, and be happy to do so if, if that's, uh, the preference of the board, the community as a whole. And, uh, we can do that at the time of preliminary subdivision. Um, and I could, uh, speak tonight to, you know, on the record, that we would be happy to comply with whatever the county felt was, was most in their interest.
Well, I think it's not so much what the county wants, it's what the people that live on E Street.
I agree.
Thank you.
That's a private road, and they have no connection to that at all. And the E road's on fifteen feet roadway.
And on that basis, I would, you know, state for the record that we would not promote the connection to that road. We would, and again, we're not putting any driveways on it. It would be, uh, placed in a fashion that would not connect, but would allow for the convenient turnaround of larger vehicles with a hammerhead turnaround. And then we just put it into open space and, um, and, and avoid any connection entirely.
All right. We still have one more person that said they want to-
E Street has never been, uh, opened as E Street. It's always been and used by the homeowners and private property. There's never been a street there.
There's your answer.
Never been a street there.
You heard it right from resident. Yep.
Yes, sir. I understand completely, and, uh, we will not promote that, that road connection. We'll terminate it, um, thirty, forty feet away from, from its, from where it intersects right now, and just leave that as a grassed area. Use it as a hammerhead turnaround and, and avoid it completely.
Okay, and we had one last person. Uh, David Palmer, please state your name and address for the record.
David Palmer, uh, 3861 Currituck Highway in Barco. It's wonderful to be up here and see you all again. It's been quite a while since I've visited.
You picked, you picked a good night.
And you know what? I am not running for office. This is fantastic. On a serious note, though, uh, back in 2003, I had the pleasure to serve on the, um, committee that did the land use plan. It was about a two-year project. We had many meetings throughout the county, we had many up here in Moayok. Moayok is one of the better attended areas that we, uh, were in. And ironically, Knott's Island was very well attended. Those people are very interested. In the land use plan, acknowledging that development is going to occur and growth will happen, it's inevitable, it was thought that it had to be organized, orchestrated, and developed in such a way to keep harmony in the area, to keep a kind of lifestyle that the, most of the people here would like. Part of the concepts there was a concept called nodal development. And Mr. Woody can probably do a much better job at this than I can. But nodal development is where along the highway, you have your commercial and retail. Surrounding that, you would have a band of your higher density housing. Beyond that, medium density. Beyond that, lower density. You would have streets that went out to promote interconnectivity because while, while there may not be anything there now, or fifteen years from now, maybe twenty years from now, the next phase will come in. Getting road, getting cars so they don't have to all go out onto Currituck Highway to go over and then go back into a shopping center was one of the big factors that was looked at in Moayok and all up and down Currituck Highway. This building out in curb cuts all along the highway was terrible. So nodal development was talked about. It wasn't something we came up with, it wasn't something the county came up with. It is a type of development that is thought to be good when you can do it from scratch. And we have that opportunity here. This development is actually, if it was brought forward all at the same time, you'd say, well, that's nodal development, because you have the commercial up front and you got a, this is actually a medium density. This is not even high density. You have a medium density bordering it. You have lower density back. You're going to have roads that can be opened up at some point to allow access without going out on the main highway. As far as the water system, and y'all know, I've had many discussions about the wastewater system. The wastewater system was developed, and the idea that it's developed solely for commercial is sort of false. No business will survive without customers. It was seen that Moayok was developing. There are more businesses in Moayok or in Grandy than there are strung out everywhere else. We were trying to concentrate and facilitate businesses. Moayok wastewater was there to do that. But in the Moayok Common Shopping Center, y'all have seen many small businesses come in and leave, come in and leave, because we don't have enough people to patronize these businesses to keep them open. Right now, if I want to get a sports jacket and a tie, I can't get it in Currituck County. I have to go elsewhere. If I want something other than sandals and tennis shoes, which is right near my house, I have to go out of Currituck County. Currituck is going to keep growing. Y'all have to have the vision and the guts to take the right steps to bring it forward. You can cater to certain whims, but y'all are supposed to be the leaders. You're supposed to look and say, okay, we understand your feelings, and we have to acknowledge that and work with it. But you've got to be preparing us for thirty years from now, for fifty years from now, or else people are going to come back and look and say, who was the idiot that did that? And they will do it. Y'all do it now. There's, you, there are projects that have been done that shouldn't have been done. There are projects talked about here tonight that this project far succeeds, far supersedes them. Those projects would not be in the ground right now if they were held to these standards this project's being held to. So anyway, all I'm asking you is acknowledge sentiment, acknowledge lifestyle, make it all work together, but acknowledge that we are growing and put the things in place to help us grow correctly for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the last speaker, and I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Is, is there any discussion or you want a motion?
You can have discussion and then a motion.
All right, well, the only, the only thing that I, that I want to do, because I've listened to everything that was said tonight, taken notes, paid attention, I've read everything the county has provided. And just one of the observations that I want to bring forward that I have experienced since I've been on this, on this board is, and, and it's, and it's, we're looking at it in, as an example tonight. Everyone in here heard that this was brought through every requirement that the county has for developments like this, meaning it goes to the planning board. It's submitted, goes to the planning board, they review it, they ask questions, they make their submissions. In this case, they approved it. And the technical review committee looks at it, which is comprised of seven, eight, nine different groups, whether it's soil and water or weather, whatever. And they approved it. Then it goes to, in this particular case, the, the applicant bringing this forward hired an engineer, which is usual, unusual, as was brought out earlier, because usually in a preliminary or in this type of a motion or application coming forward to board, that's not done. But in this case, we've had information brought to us from, by the applicant's engineer that the stormwater, which seems to be the major issue, there are others, but stormwater seems to be the preeminent issue, was addressed by their engineer. And then we had our engineer and our, uh, Mike Doxy, our, uh, storm warden, he deals with, uh, stormwater issues, he come forth. And they both said, this won't make it, this won't exacerbate it or make it any worse. It may in fact help some of the surrounding property. I'm only bringing this out as a brief kind of synopsis so that you will kind of think about what we have to hear or what we have to deliberate on when we make these decisions. So what we have before us right now is information that was provided to us by, you know, from soup to nuts, all the way from the planning board, technical review committee, engineers, our own staff. Doesn't rise to that, uh, level that our own people or engineers have indicated that it's a no-go. One of the things I think we should do as a board of commissioners is be consistent in how we address our rules, our regulations. They weren't just put in overnight. I would hope to think that there was thought and consideration and study before these plans or these rules and regulations were inculcated in what we have now as our UDO. However, it seems that everything that I have heard relative to any developments in the Moayok area, it is the same thing over and over, stormwater. There is obviously an issue with flooding. I don't think anybody can deny that. If in fact, because we hear this over and over again, if in fact, these are rules, our guidelines are not consistent with what the people of Currituck want, then we should change them. Then we should change them. But we shouldn't act inconsistent with our rules, because what I have seen and what the potential is, is you can have one applicant come in here and he be denied, and another one down the road, he gets approved, utilizing the same rules, utilizing the same regulations. That sends a wrong message to people who would want to come here to Currituck and open businesses or build things, because if it's inconsistent, it sounds like it's almost arbitrary and capricious. It's almost designed based on what the political will is at the time. So all I'm saying is kind of sort of think about where we come from on this. If the rules are incompatible with the desires of the people of Currituck, then we should change them. But don't look for fig leaves in order to maybe address a political concern as opposed to a technical concern. I just throw this out for people to think about. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Having listened to everything that's been presented tonight, to, tonight, it is, uh, very difficult. We have all sat here and, uh, listened. Uh, I cannot deny that everyone here, uh, has a role to play in the community and really care about what is going on. I would like to move to deny PB 1312 due to its inconsistencies. The policy H and one of the land use plan because proposed density is not appropriate for the location and that the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. I'd like to, to make a comment before we vote on it. I also share Mr. Griggs' concern, um, whether this goes through or not. My concern is the land use plan that was developed and adopted in this county came from input from the citizens of the county. And some of us on the board of commissioners stood our ground and adopted that land use plan based on the input from the citizens of, of this county. Some of us got sent home for following the input from the citizens of this county, because the citizens of this county told us what they wanted to see. We adopted it. We created a unified development ordinance that, um, is a part of that land use plan. We have a Moayok Small Area Plan that we had a work session tonight, and this particular piece of property we're discussing still, even after it's been vetted by the, the, the Small Area Plan of Moayok, is still recommending up to four units per acre. small area plan of Moayak, is still recommending up to four units per acre. We haven't adopted it yet, but if we adopt the new, the new recommendations, it still recommends up to four units per acre on this particular piece of property that we just had a motion said it's not compatible because of the density. I also want to do what the folks of Currituck County want, but we're getting two messages. We got a, a committee that just met and, and is going to ask us to adopt exactly what this person is proposing to build here. It, it is. It's this piece of property is exactly what is already currently allowed. We're going to be asked at our next meeting to adopt this for this same exact piece of property. So if, if the Board of Commissioners are going to truly reflect what Moayak wants, Pal's Point wants, Knott's Island wants, we have to act in a consistent, a consistent mode. And, and I understand that it's, it's not wanted, and, and, you know, that, if that's the way it is, that, that's the way it is. But the Board of Commissioners, we cannot make policy and then just, as soon as we adopt it, we're told that's not the policy we need to follow. So we have at our next meeting on our agenda, is this correct, Mr. Woody?
Yes.
To adopt the update that prescribes exactly what's being proposed be allowed on this property. I just want y'all to understand the quandary that it puts us in. When people come into the county, they spend money, they hire people, they put all this engineer work in or whatever, they go back, they listen to the community, they come back, and, and we're never going to be able to track businesses in Currituck County if we don't have consistent rules. And we're never going to have the shopping experience that everybody says they want in Currituck County. I've had people tell me they don't want to do business in Currituck County because they don't know what they're going to get when they come forward if they follow the rules. And, and it's, I'm expressing my personal, I don't want to say it's a frustration, because again, we're going to, we're going to adopt the policies that you tell us you want. That's what our job is, is to do that. But it's, it's, the inconsistency that we operate with is, is very, it sends a, a very difficult message to people we're trying to recruit for business in the county, and that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I think everybody here is not opposed to development, but I'm, I think Ms. Drago said it best. We got a problem here we got to fix. And we can, you know, they're all saying, we're whistling by the graveyard, kicking the can, and to me, we need to fix a problem so we can move forward with this, and I'll be honest with you, if that creates this, I'm not going to vote for it, because no, no one should have to live this way.
Let me ask you this. If we're going to fix the problem, do you, do you realize what that means? That means you're going to have to, if you're, if you're going to say that you don't want to move forward with anything until the problem's fixed, that means you have to do a moratorium.
I didn't say that. But the thing of it is, the, the people here tonight, now, you don't try to set me up, because I'm, I'm slow and you know it, but I know the people here tonight said that they're willing to pay, I think would consider, an extra tax to fix this. Now, if they're willing, if, if they're that serious about it, I'm going to listen to it. It's not politics, it's pure old golden rule. I wouldn't want to live that way. And what I saw today, I don't want to live that way.
And we have listened to it, and I think our decision's going to reflect what the folks have said tonight. I'm just saying that it's a whole lot more than, than what we're doing, and I'm just standing by what I said.
Mr. Chairman.
So, yes, sir.
I, I've listened to all the technical stuff. I mean, I've heard both sides, people who've lived there, it has years and years of history there, hear what they say. I've heard what the engineers have said. Lord, it would be nice to have something that's going to help. Mr. Petrie said, I think we can, the pictures that we see here, certainly no one wants to live that way, and the gentleman hit it on the head. This is countywide. It's not just in Moayak, it's everywhere. It's Knott's Island, we have the same problems. So I don't know what the answer is. I mean, the answer is to fix it. The cost of fixing it might be, I mean, sometimes the disease is cheaper than the cure, and an attorney told me one time. But I understand, I feel for what you, what you're saying, I totally understand what you're saying. I, I don't know what the right answer is, and I, I just, we just had to have to vote it up or down, that's all.
Well, and, and on that same note, you know, looking at the, the first plan that was proposed to us on this property, I'm not opposed to residential being in this area, and, and Mr. Rose, these plans have come a long way from the first plan that was presented. Again, my biggest concern is, is that roadway, and, and that's, that's, that's where my heartburn is, is with that. I think that, you know, collectively, we can work on the, the drainage and things like that, but the roadway is, is probably my greatest concern.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I've known the, Mr. Rose, he's lived in the county for a long time, and he's, you know, like I said, I mean, he's just trying to, trying to do something with, I guess with his partner, so forth and so on. So like Marion said, and my major concern was, was the drainage and, and the roads as well, you know, and like you said, I mean, they're meeting what we've adopted, what the people wanted, but then the people don't want it, so it kind of puts us in limbo here of, you know, what to do, so.
I kind of think there's some special considerations, special costs. The property itself, as you look at it on a map, suitable for that development, looking at it in real life reality with the water and flooding issues that is current, I don't know that land use plan when it was all developed had the benefit of all that information. It may or may not have, I don't know. But it puts an overview over top of what a basic, you know, land use map purpose would be.
I guess, I guess my point is, is the board's going to have to go back to scratch and, and look at, at everything, including what's coming to us from the proposed revisions to the land use plan, and just start from scratch is all I know to do.
I mean, again, if I could just reiterate, I was speaking more to the generalities. Lack of consistency drives people crazy. Again, if the rules that we have and that we operate under are not compatible with the real life world, then it's incumbent upon this board to change them, not to dance around with them and approve some and not approve in others, and this, it's, it's the, my issue's consistency. That's it, overall. If rules mean anything, then they should be consistent. If they don't mean anything, they become guidelines. That's all.
All right. With that, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So.
My vote was a no. I didn't say, I didn't comment.
Okay.
What?
My, my vote was a no.
Yes votes, raise your hand.
Okay.
For the denial.
Excuse me.
For the denial.
Vote to deny.
Yes is a motion to deny.
The, the motion to deny was defeated three-four.
Ah, I'm, I'm, we, yeah, what, what was?
We had a motion for denial.
That's right.
Three people voted in favor of the motion for denial.
That's right.
So it failed, so you need a substitute motion.
Everybody's looking at me, aren't they?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to look at my bowl of rice. I mean, sometimes, some, you know, I guess somebody, sometimes you have to man up. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a mo, a motion to approve PB 13-12 due to its consistency with the land use plans, density allowances for full service classification, and policy emphasis of the Moayak subarea, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
We have a motion for approval. We have a second.
I'll second Mr. Griggs' motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with four ayes and three noes. Next item, public hearing in action, PB 1401. Currituck County requests a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 7 and 10, to revise the tree protection standards. Let's take a minute and just. All right, we're still in session. Mr. Woody, you want to go with the next agenda item?
I'm ready if you're ready.
Keep going.
This is a text amendment request submitted by the staff, by the county.
We have a, another agenda item, thank you. Yes. Mr. Woody.
This is an amendment request submitted by the staff. In the old UDO, we had tree protection standards. They weren't very clear. In the new UDO, those have kind of been materialized or more specific. So in the new UDO, we have been applying these tree protection standards, and what we have found is that, and the trees, when trees meet a certain size, they're called a heritage tree. If you have a heritage tree on your property as a developer or whatever, a landowner, you have to save that tree. And the idea is that, for the most part, you can design your site around these trees, and these are big, significant trees. But if you can't, if the, if the tree's just right in the middle of the site, you can remove the tree, that, that's okay. If you remove it, you've got to then replant or replace trees, so you've got to make up for it. What we have found is that in wooded areas, this ordinance is proving to be very difficult for the landowners and developers. And we are proposing to tweak this ordinance to make heritage trees be a little bit, a slightly larger sized tree. So for example, right now, there's a couple of exceptions, like sweet gums and gum trees and things you don't want to save, but trees that are 18 inches and, or greater in diameter are considered a heritage tree. We are proposing that that be increased to trees that are 24 inches or greater in diameter. So these are, 18 inches is a, is a big tree, 24 is a very big tree. Also for live oaks, the initial ordinance says that live oaks that are eight inches in diameter, which is a lot of live oaks on the beach, be increased to 12 inches in diameter. So what we're asking is that the board consider making what is, what actually qualifies as a heritage tree, a larger specimen tree. Also, we wanted to make a suggestion about the replacement. So if you have to cut down a tree, right now, we said that you have to replace one caliber inch of tree for every inch of tree removed. So if you cut down three 20-inch trees, you have to plant 60 inches of new trees. We're also finding that it's almost impossible to plant that many inches of new trees on the site. We actually had one development that had to go plant trees on another property adjacent. So we think that we'd probably be better off if the replanning rate was a 50%. So if you removed 60 inches of heritage trees, you would then plant 30 inches of new trees. Now, remember, these new trees are going to grow, and eventually you're going to have probably a lot more than just three heritage trees. We also had, the one thing we did in the previous ordinance is we also said that if you cut down a oak tree, you've got to plant all oak trees as replacement. We're suggesting that we allow folks to vary that some, maybe half the trees would be oak and the other half would be other species, and the, the reason for that is if you got a disease of a species, and they're all the same, they're all going to die. And, and I will say that we did run these, these tweaks by the Cooperative Extension Service, Deborah Kelso, and she agreed with, and she actually helped us work on this, but she agreed with the replanning standards, diversifying the species, and applying this to a little bit larger tree size. So what this does essentially is it provides a little more flexibility and diversity in our tree protection ordinance, and I don't, and I don't think that's a bad thing, and staff does recommend approval of this. And I can answer any questions you have.
I have one.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You know what the word coin jock means?
I do not.
I do.
What?
Land of the wild blueberry.
Mulberry. And what's he want to do? Let them cut them without replacing them? I've got one in my yard, and the kids love them, because when they come out, they pick the mulberries. Shame on you. Go ahead.
That concludes.
Did you get that?
I, I got it. I'll, I'll take the heat on this one.
All right. Any questions? All right, we have a public hearing. I don't have anyone that signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this that did not get a chance to sign up? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second that motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Petrie, a second from Commissioner Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, Amendment to Economic Development Advisory Board Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, at the end of last year, the board adopted an ordinance that repealed the existence of the Airport Advisory Board and basically merged the Economic Development Advisory Board and Airport Advisory Board into one. At that time, you provided for membership of seven members who would be citizens of the, of the county. Since that time, the board feels like it might be a benefit to the county to allow for the appointment of four additional persons who, who need not necessarily be residents of the county, but who have some connection with or own a business within the county. So what's before you tonight is an ordinance amendment that will increase the composition of the Economic Development Advisory Board from seven members to 11, seven members who are residents of the county, and four who need not be residents of the county, but who shall, at the time of appointment, be actively connected with and have experience in economic development, agriculture, business, or industry within the county. The next part of the ordinance amends the initial term so that you would have some initial staggering for the new board once you make your 11 appointments. That will provide for five appointees to serve an initial term of one year, six to serve an initial term of two years. Thereafter, all members would serve a term of two years, as provided within your ordinance for all your, all your appointed boards. Also, we'll point, point out that in addition to those members serving on the Economic Development Advisory Board, the prior ordinance also provided that a member of the Board of Commissioners, the county manager, and the president, the president of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce or designee, and the president of College at Albemarle Designee also will serve as members of the Economic Development Advisory Board. The ordinance is committed to you for your approval.
And I guess the terms that some get one year and two year, they'll draw straws?
No, it'll be up to, be up to this board to, to establish who will serve the initial one-year and two-year term at the time that you make appointment.
I think drawing straws, yeah. Flip a coin, draw straws or something.
I guess the point being that, that you need to, to establish, when, when you make your appointment, who, who is serving what term? Whether you want to make, draw straws at the time that you make the appointment, that's fine, we just make sure the record is clear.
No, when they have their first meeting, that's when they'll draw straws to figure out who gets the one-year and who gets the two-year term. Can't they do that?
That's called passing a buck.
You, you, you need to make your, your appointment decision and set the initial terms at the time of appointment.
Okay, all of us want our appointment to have two-year terms.
Well, then the other thing is that not have staggered terms, and everybody starts out with two years.
Well, then I'll, I'll make, I guess, a suggestion. The appointment that I'm going to make for this board has served previously on the Economic Development Board, and I will, I will make my appointment for a one-year term to start off with.
Well, we need to adopt this ordinance first.
That's right. What's before you is the, the ordinance amendment that would provide for the additional seats on the board.
Yeah.
I too will make my nomination for one year, so that's two.
So for District 5 and, and one at-large seat will be at one year.
So you want us to designate that before we adopt the ordinance?
I mean, what's before you right now is the ordinance for adoption.
Okay, put me down for one year. We got three people with one year.
Motion to approve. Can we start? I think that's what you're waiting on, a motion?
Seven.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And what is it you want next, Mr. McCree?
I, I think the board wants to somehow determine how you're going to establish staggered terms of the new board.
Mr. Chairman, actually, the next item on your agenda for consideration is an appointment to the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. That's your next item.
Okay, we'll come back to this. So, Ms. Gilbert? So, Ms. Gilbert, your appointment to the senior citizen advisory board, Ms. Rosalie Rose, and she is termed out.
Correct, and I'd like to, um, appoint Rick Bell to the senior citizens advisory board.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appointment to economic development board, we start with Mr. Idlet.
Mr. Chairman, this will be, this will be the time, I think, it'll be appropriate for y'all to determine terms. What I've got is Paul Martin, Marion Gilbert, and Paul O'Neill suggesting that their appointments be one-year. We would sug, I would suggest that two of you take two years, and the remaining two take three years.
I'll take two.
Well, you're limited again to two-year terms.
Two years, okay, two. So everybody else will be two years.
Sign me up for two, then.
Okay.
Okay, we have that established.
Now we need appointments.
Mr. Idlet, do you have your appointment?
Yes, I do. I would like to appoint Martha Luark Barnes, uh, Burns, excuse me, from Knights Island.
Okay, Mr. Petrie?
Louis Davis, Coin Jock Marina.
Okay.
Rose Thompson.
Rose Thompson.
Okay, and mine is Sam Miller.
Barbara Courtney.
Ray Gregg.
Mine's gonna be tabled at this time for the next meeting. Now, one of the people that I've spoke to has some health issues. He actually emailed me while we were here tonight.
Okay, well, we have six of our nominees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so.
Ms. Chairman, uh, I pointed Louis to the game commission board.
He is, he's not eligible.
Yeah, I pointed him to the game commission board this year.
Okay. And then come back at the next meeting.
Table yours.
Yeah, Butch's, Butch's appointment is tabled, Mr. Scanlon.
I'm tabled, because Louis is on another board.
On the game commission, I put him on that.
Okay.
All right. Next agenda item is the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Gilbert, second, from Commissioner Martin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, commissioners report, Mr. McCord.
I got a few, I'll try to keep it under the three-minute thing. Um, Charles Pikel, um, he's the Moyoc Middle School baseball coach, also alumni of Currituck County. He's doing a baseball camp this Saturday, it's $20 for three hours if you have kids. Charles is a great guy, works for the school system, so does his wife. Um, $20, like I said it before, from nine to 12 this Saturday. Uh, anybody that wants to donate any ball equipment to underprivileged children, they're gonna do that. He's got multiple high school baseball coaches in the area, uh, minor league baseball players. Uh, I don't know if many of you guys know this, we have a, the assistant high school baseball coach on the varsity team, played for the Cubs organization, organization, Corey Martin. He'll be there, as well as, he's got a couple other guys coming. Um, the, uh, just a quick thank you to the Crawford Fire Department. Uh, the last 10 days, I dealt with them twice due to my family, um, and they did a really good job, and I appreciate what the volunteers, as well as the EMS does. Um, one more note, Parks and Rec, or two more notes, actually. Parks and Rec, the 10-year-year-old boys' all-star team beat Elizabeth City. I've coached basketball for 10 years, doesn't happen very often, so that was a big, big feat. Um, and, uh, the, um, I'm sitting here looking at my notes, sorry about that. Uh, the Wild Horse Foundation, over there in Corolla, uh, this weekend, two, um, as well as multiple Corolla citizens, two of the deputies, Sergeant Vic Lasher and Deputy Mike Davenport, and it was about five other citizens. They saved a horse, uh, I don't know the whole stint of it, but like I said, it was, it was a big deal. We got a bunch of emails from it at the Sheriff's Department. And last thing, and I'm under the three minutes. Uh, Garland Acres is, um, for Fellowship Baptist Church, is hosting a golf tournament at Eagle Creek Golf Club on the 28th to benefit a missions trip. Uh, they've raised a few thousand dollars already, I know they need more. Uh, CA, you're a golfer. Uh, I've already paid for my team. It's, uh, $240 a team, includes food, they got all kinds of good stuff. It's Friday, the 28th, at 1:00 PM, so, uh, I hadn't asked off for work early yet from the Sheriff's Department, but I've already paid for a team, so I guess I need to ask that tomorrow morning. But that's it for me tonight.
I have nothing. Mr. Griggs?
I have nothing.
Mr. Martin?
I'd just like to remind, uh, everyone, if you're having problems doing your taxes, you can call the senior center, and, uh, up until April 10th, they will be, uh, doing taxes and give you, uh, help if you need it, and, but you've gotta have an appointment, and it's for each Thursday. So give them a call, and, uh, if they have an opening, they can place you in there and you get your taxes done. That's all I have, thank you.
Filling them out's not the problem, it's sending the check.
But you gotta file.
Mr. Idlet?
Just like to pass along, county manager and myself met with chair and vice chair of the Fire and Emergency Services Advisory Board this week, along with the MS Fire Chief Glover. Um, talked about a multitude of issues. Uh, the chairman of the group is getting ready to come off. Probably the vice chair will be moving up. We talked about the transition to that. We tried to refocus some on what the mission of that organization is, uh, the advisory board is. Uh, we talked about some unfunded mandates or unfunded requirements that are soon gonna be coming before us, uh, that are pretty significant. I think the manager's preparing some stuff there. So, Dan, anything else you can think of?
That's what I think we covered it.
So, but anyhow, well, the, the assessment, I think everyone's had the opportunity to review that. Uh, Mr. Petrie asked today, or sent an email today, had the, the volunteer department said the opportunity? Yes, they have. Uh, they have prepared some comments, Chief Glover has those. Uh, I don't know whether they're gonna send them all back for a complete rewrite of the draft or a cover page to address the two or three little small concerns that they had. Uh, everyone here's had the opportunity to, to comment. So I, I don't see anything necessary to send back so far. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to move forward and, uh, get the assessment, uh, team to come and do the presentation, so we can start, uh, biting a piece of this elephant one bite at a time. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Petrie?
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Ms. Gilbert?
Couple things, I'm excited to, um, announce that we've got a new business that's opened right here at the Courthouse, past the Salt Restaurant. Um, they're right, directly across the street, open for breakfast, um, until about 2:00. Their last seating, it's at 2:00, so I encourage you to go by and, and, um, be a patron at a new restaurant. Um, I'm also pleased to announce that St. Luke's Episcopal Mission Church, which is I'm a member of, we just opened, um, our doors in our new home, right across the street in the old Courthouse Cafe Restaurant. So we're excited about our new home, and please feel free to come by and visit. Um, at the last planning board meeting, this Moyoc small-area plan presented, and I just, I can't echo enough, they did a tremendous job on presenting that, and I am looking forward to the presentation that they're bringing forward on April 7th to our board. Um, two other community, um, things, Tuesday night, if you wanna help the Crawford Fire Department, they're doing their spaghetti dinner from 5:00 to 7:30. I encourage you, it's a great dinner and a great way to get out and meet and greet and, uh, visit some other folks. And, um, ladies, you won't have to fix dinner that night. Gentlemen, you can make a date night. Um, and then Saturday, the Charborer Ruotans have their annual prime rib dinner. Um, so if that's from 5:30 to 7:00, again, another great opportunity to get out in the community, have a great meal, and share some camaraderie. That's all I have.
When is that?
The Charborer Ruotans Prime Rib Dinner is Saturday night, um, this Saturday from 5:30 to 7:00. And then Tuesday, at the Crawford Fire Department, they're having their spaghetti dinner from 5:00 to 7:30.
I ain't much on spaghetti, but I am on prime rib.
Yeah.
Well, the prime rib is, is to die for.
Don't you have some news about ranchland?
Yeah.
Um, we have some, some items that we have been addressing with NC DOT as far as paving, and, um, they have given us in writing, some of the roads are gonna be paved. Um, I would offer anyone that lives in the ranchland development, we have our, um, Neighborhood Watch meeting. Uh, that's gonna be on the 27th at 7:00 PM at Moyoc Assembly of God, right there in ranchland. Um, our guest speaker's gonna be Mike Doxy, and, um, I also understand that Holly White, with our planning department, is gonna try to pop in and also address the neighborhood. But we do have some paving that's going to be done by August, and, um, our county manager has forwarded that to me. But, again, that was something that, um, we were gonna address at the, um, Neighborhood Watch meeting, but it's out there now.
I didn't say it, you did.
It's okay. I'm proud that we're making some, some, um...
We've been working on that for years.
It, it has, and, you know, um, a lot of people have been misled on, you know, what was being done in the neighborhood, and, you know, I, I am a resident of that neighborhood, but my efforts, um, have been minimal compared to what the Board of Commissioners have done in the past. And, and, you know, I'm not one, those of you who know me, to take all the credit. It, it's been a working document for many years, um, the stormwater, it's, but we're making progress, and, and I'm just grateful that we've got great staff members and good relationships, Mr. Scanlon, with, uh, NC DOT to, to get, to get that ball going, so, thank you.
I have just one, one thing. I think the county is gonna be awarded a significant amount of money for the airport.
Has been awarded.
Yes. Do you wish to tell us, is it $2.8 million?
Uh, the county has received, uh, a $2.8 million funding from the Division of Aviation of State of North Carolina, uh, to the county, requires a 10% match. Uh, that is to, uh, construct the southern parallel taxiway at the airport.
And...
Isn't that significantly more than what we had anticipated?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And you have the money set aside that's been budgeted for that.
The, the county has already budgeted the match as part of the overall plan of relocate, uh, of the, the projects we've been doing out on Airport Road. Uh, the state is in the process of authorizing the engineering work and the design work to go ahead and move forward, so that work will commence. Uh, it'll take a while for the design, the permitting, the actual construction cannot be awarded until we relocate those facilities that are on Airport Road. The animal shelter facility and forestry being the two larger ones. Um, the project will include, um, unfortunately, we'll have to remove the skateboard park as part of the project that will be encroaching in the safe, the safe zone, and they'll have to rework, excuse me, the entrance into the transfer station. And, and that's all part of this, this project.
Can really get a good skate out of that thing, hold on to airplane wing going low.
Yes.
And I have nothing else. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything else?
Uh, just wanna comment to the board on your, your nominations you just made for the reprisal of the economic development board. Uh, we have five members appointed. Uh, that is not enough right now to make a quorum, so the board will not be able to move forward with meeting. I have down that Commissioner McCord and Commissioner Petrie still have an appointment, but you also have several appointments as a body to make.
Yeah.
Um, so you'll need to work through that and, and at least get a couple more members appointed so that we can go ahead and task them to the first meeting.
Mr. Scanlon, on that same note, um, I wanna reassure the, the residents and, and the folks that have served on the airport advisory board that that advisory board is not gonna go away, that it's gonna be a part of the economic development board. So those that have fought hard to, to regain, um, a business venue at our airport as one of our biggest assets, that, that will not be forgotten.
It is part of the charge of that board. I also remind this board, though, that, um, as we talk about our citizen appointees, uh, we generally have a commissioner that supports our advisory boards, and that'll be another thing that you will need to work amongst yourself, whoever would like to either volunteer or has the time, but, uh, we need a commissioner appointee to that board.
All right, and with that...
If, if he doesn't wanna do it, I'll volunteer.
With that, we need a motion to go...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, would it be okay at this time if I make a comment about the primary election?
I'd prefer you wait till the next meeting, please. Uh, need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NC General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
We need to add the, the, the litigation that we're discussing, which is Corolla, uh, Swan Beach Corolla versus Currituck County. Just admit that.
Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
We have a motion from Ms. Gilbert. We have a second?
Second.
From Commissioner Martin, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?